Second 2025 business meeting of your Ashland City Council. Councilor Kaplan will offer the land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work, the Iqaracutsum Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Takelma, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta village of Kwakwaka, where the crow lights that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Alyssa. Sherrell.
Here.
Dale.
Here.
Bloom.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Duquesne.
Hanson.
Here.
Thank you. For mayor's announcements, the first is that if you have come this evening to speak to the council on any item either on the agenda or simply on your mind, please make sure that you fill out the speaker request form. It's on the wall in the back. Fill it out and put it in the tray here just in front of our city recorder's desk. What you want to do is make sure that you write your name clearly so that I can understand, I can read it properly, and also mark whether you are here to speak to us on a specific agenda item, or if you have come to speak to something that is not on the agenda. If you're speaking about something that is not on the agenda, you'll put that in the public forum and you'll identify what that topic is. By filling it out this way, you help us bring you up here at the right time so that you can address the council on the issue that you are looking to talk to us about. The other announcement is that there, the Ashland Svetehersk Aid Project is hosting a benefit concert and film for Ukraine on December 14th from 2:00 to 4:30 p.m. at the Ashland High School Theater. So this is becoming an annual event that raises funding for our sister city Svetehersk and gets an update to the community on the various ways that we have been engaged in that sister city relationship. So if you are interested, tickets can be purchased at ASAPAshland.org. We move on now to the approval of minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Floor is open for a motion regarding the minutes. Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, I move approval of the minutes as listed in the packet.
Is there a second? Roll call please Alyssa. Sherrell.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Thank you. And we move on now to the consent agenda. Would any counselor like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Counselor Hanson.
Yes, thank you mayor. I'd like to pull both items, please.
Both items? Okay. We will move those then to the end of the evening under unfinished business. That's when we will take those up. Since both consent agenda items have been pulled, we will move on now to public forum. So we have eight people who have signed up to speak this evening. We set aside 15 minutes for this time, so we'll give each person two minutes. The way that you will present, you'll speak to the councils, you'll come up to that podium and you'll speak into the microphone. You'll see a light indicator next to you. As long as it says green, it means that you still have time left. When it moves to yellow, you have 20 seconds left and you'll hear the first buzzer. When your time is done, it'll go to red and you'll hear the last buzzer. We ask at that point that you finish the sentence you're on so that the next person in line can take their place at the podium. If you, if you for mobility reasons need us to bring a microphone to you, we are also happy to do that. Simply raise your hand when it's time for you to speak. When you come up, please tell us your name and the community in which you reside, and please move in this order. Tyler Hawkins. William Zentner II. Alex Soul. Yeah, the podium there. There you go. Yeah, it's changed since we put in the additional furniture here. You don't have to line up, but if you'd like to, you certainly can along that back wall. So we'll start with Tyler Hawkins, William Zentner II, and then Alex Soul. Go ahead. And you'll have two minutes, again, two minutes with the signal when you have 20 seconds left. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Tyler Hawkins. I moved here in 2011 with my family to go to Southern Oregon University. During that time, I was part of the beekeeping club. We did Bee City, or we did the Bee Campus USA. I was part of that. And then consequently, after that, Bee City USA sprung up. I'm here to talk about the notice for the herbicide glyphosate that was applied on November 26th along Main Street or Ciscue, anyway, in the median. I want to remind the council that this city has made a commitment. When I was driving here, I saw that we still have a sign on Main Street. It says that we are Bee City USA and that we have a commitment. And you know, part of this commitment is very vague. It says to avoid pesticide public use in public spaces, except when there's certain conditions such as designated habitat and sensitive features, except when targeted is deemed to be the best option for invasive noxious weed, insects, or disease management. But below that, it says eliminated pesticide uses that are solely to maintain aesthetics on city or campus grounds. And I know that this is also just an herbicide, so there's like some technical stuff regarding this, but it seems like we're really trying to like be, try to get around this. When we all, I think, know that glyphosate is a dangerous chemical. It's been implicated in cancer. There are made, there are issues with it. As a beekeeper, as a member of the community that has seen 60% loss last year, over half of our hives died last year. There are a number of reasons why, but chemicals are one of them. I, we need to remove these chemicals from our environment.
Thank you. William Zentner, then Alex Soul, and then Angelina McLean.
Ready?
Yes.
My name is Bill Zentner. I live in Ashland, Oregon, and I have a personal story about glyphosate. I lived on the Triple S Ranch out in Eagle Point for nine years, and the facilities manager out there sprayed all the fence lines with glyphosate. He died of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma after 15 years of suffering with it. And this is drug, this chemical has been implicated in that disease. And Monsanto has suffered several lawsuits concerning that. So I think we should take this into consideration. Okay, it's a dangerous chemical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Alex Soul. I am here because of what happened this week, both at the retreat and on Ashland Boulevard. It's a breach of public trust. The city quietly rolled out this glyphosate, however you say it, a carcinogenic poison into our community spraying Roundup along medians between Clay and Walker and potentially further into the parade route. This is where children walk, bike, and sit during public events. You did this with no meaningful notice, no debate, no explanation, and Parks Director Rocky Houston still refuses to answer basic questions. Roundup stays in soil for months, and the data is clear. CDC 2022, glyphosate is in 87% of U.S. children. And you all authorized this in our community, or allowed this city manager to just run slipshot and put poison in our community. Wow. What do you say for yourselves? You've got a lot of answering to do. When this parade happens, and if they do continue along that route, you all, and you, Ms. Carter, will have to answer to this community why. In a community that has been told is an environmental progressive community. Listen to this. Oh, man, this time. We get two minutes. You guys get all the time in the world. This is going to come to an end. The way you're governing is not functioning, ma'am. This has to stop, and it's going to stop. And my group, Ashland Ford, I'm not speaking for them right now. If they don't file a lawsuit against you.
Thank you, sir.
I will.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you, sir. The next person who is up is Angelina McLean, followed by Paul Mozina, and then Karen Potts. Go ahead.
My name is Angelina McLean, and I live in Ashland. I am concerned about the recent policy change regarding herbicide use and including the Ashland Street median plans. I live near there, and I was appalled to see them being sprayed last week. Glyphosate, which was used in our medians and which is the active ingredient in Roundup, is banned in many countries around the world. It's linked to certain cancers and involved in lawsuits where the injured plaintiffs have won. Just because you can buy it at some hardware stores does not mean that it's inherently safe. It's also toxic to other forms of life, including pollinators. It has been documented to cause damage to honeybee guts and their navigation abilities. Pollinators are in dangerously sharp decline, and Ashland, as a designated Bee City USA, should be working to at least, at the very least, to preserve the habitats and food sources that we already have for the pollinators and not be spraying them with toxic chemicals. Ashland was the fifth Bee City USA starting back in 2015 with SOU being the first Bee City USA college campus. I was not able to find any current information about this on the city's website, and I would like to know how this herbicide policy change could possibly fit in with our commitments to pollinators. Citizens of Ashland are largely health-conscious and environmentally proactive. We have long been proud of and reassured to know that the city doesn't spray herbicides and pesticides regularly in public spaces. Changing this policy and increasing public areas that are sprayed with herbicides is not in alignment with our citizens' values and is not the safest nor the most responsible option. I urge the city to stop the spraying, listen to input from the citizens, and reconsider this policy and the Ashland Street median plans. The project that was recently done in the section near Market of Choice that ripped out all the plants and replaced them with large rocks is very unpopular, and I would bet that its maintenance involves continued herbicide spraying. It's been difficult to get clear information, but I was told by someone from the city that that project will not be continued along the rest of Ashland Street, and I hope that that is true. Every year, those flowering plants in the medians are covered with a lot of pollinators and bring people a lot of joy.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paul Mozina?
My name is Paul Mozina. I live in Ashland. Oregon budget law allows the council to make changes to the budget that was approved by the citizens' budget committee after a public hearing has been held on the budget as approved. The council doesn't need to go back to the citizens' budget committee for their approval if the changes are less than 10% of the fund. This is called the 10% rule. This council may think it was okay to amend the 2025-2027 budget at a study session without making a motion because the 10% rule allows you to change the budget. The 10% rule does not nullify the Ashland Charter, which requires a public motion and vote on any decision made by the council, nor does it nullify Oregon Revised Statute 294.453, which requires a public hearing on the budget document as approved by the budget committee. Deputy City Administrator Jordan Ruklin's introduction to the public hearing on the 2025-2027 budget at the June 3rd business meeting declared your intention to violate ORS 294453. Quote, "I do want to highlight for you all the changes to the version of the budget compared to what was passed and recommended by the citizens' budget committee, and that is the source for the childcare grant funds that were supported by counsel via motion." So that is the budget before you all for adoption, end quote. Ruklin claimed that the change to the funding for the childcare grant program was, quote, "supported by counsel via motion," quote. There was no motion made on the amendments at the study session. The council should have brought forward the budget amendments after the public hearing with a motion and vote. Counselor blatantly violated the ORS by amending the budget before the public hearing and flagrantly violated the Ashland Charter by not having a public motion and vote on the action to amend the 2025-2027 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Potts, followed by Vince Doyle and Michelle Thielin.
Hello, I'm Karen Potts from Ashland. I'm reading this on behalf of the Bellevue Grange Number 759 to record our objection to the practice of spraying glyphosate on the city's median strips to inhibit weed growth. There are non-toxic substitutes for glyphosate that can be used, such as vinegar solutions, kallated, iron-based sprays, and other organic herbicides. In 2015, the World Health Organization International Agency for Research on Cancer classified glyphosate as probably carcinogenic to humans. The EPA's conclusions of giving glyphosate a status of noncarcinogenic has been called into question, as evidenced by the thousands of lawsuits still pending and billions being offered by Bayer to settle. In light of the possible risk, the workers that have to apply the chemicals are also undertaking additional and unnecessary risks because there are substitutes available. In addition to human risk, the chemical poses significant risk to pollinators, namely disruption of their biome and inhibits their navigation abilities. Ashland is affiliated with Bee City USA and as such has made a commitment to reduce the use of pesticides and to have an integrated pest management plan that expands the use of nonchemical pest management methods. Also, because we are in Jackson County, which bans GMO crops that rely heavily on pesticide applications like glyphosate, people here have much lower exposure to pesticides than in other parts of the country. The pollinators of Ashland and the people of Ashland would be better off with zero exposure to this chemical. Therefore, given the above-mentioned information on behalf of Bellevue Grange Number 759, we're asking you to eliminate glyphosate from your landscape maintenance practice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the record, my name is Vince Doyle. I'm a resident of Ashland. I'm also a beekeeper, and I'm here to basically voice my concern about the spraying of glyphosate in the medium down by Omar's. I have several hives actually that are in that area, and I had the opportunity to take a look at some of those hives a few days ago, and I actually see a few dead bees on the landing board of the hives. It was on a warm day when the bees were out foraging. These bees can forage up to five miles. So it's, I believe it could have a real impact on our pollinators. I'm concerned. I mean, this is, I thought this was an environmentally friendly city, and here we are spraying a known carcinogenic that's banned over much of Europe, right here on our backyard. Anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Thielin, followed by Sharon Bryson.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Thielin. I live in Ashland. And I'm here because I represent one of the 25% of the population in North America that has a gene that's called 11352. This gene makes it such that I cannot tolerate hazardous chemicals, as well as 25% of the population. And for us, it is a nightmare to live in a chemically toxic community. We cannot tolerate it. It happens that we have 30 different symptoms. We get respiratory failure. We get brain issues. We get our, we get neuropathy throughout our entire body from toxic chemicals as well as mold. And I have personally, because I'm a retired psychotherapist, I have assisted many, many people for suicide watch as a volunteer. Most of us end up committing suicide because we have no recourse. Our bodies can't tolerate it. We end up with horrible disabilities. We end up losing all of our possessions because our possessions are saturated with mold. Our possessions are saturated with toxic chemicals. We end up having to leave our homes. We end up losing our families. I can't tell you the untold damage that I have personally experienced and witnessed in my lifetime. Is that it?
No, you still have 20 seconds.
Okay. So I just want to say, please, search your hearts. This is a very toxic chemical. $800 million has been spent by Bayer, who now, who bought it from Monsanto.
Thank you.
Hi, Sharon Bryson. I live in Ashland. I'm a little prepared this time.
Ms. Bryson, can you get in closer to that microphone so we can hear you? Thank you. Go ahead and restart her time. Okay, go ahead.
I'm here to talk about the city using glyphosate in our neighborhoods. This practice is inappropriate. There are several alternative approaches that will get, will get the same results and don't have the same consequences to the health of our residents. I see where the new code adopted in August, Ashland Municipal Code 9.28.090. I see where the new code adopted in August, Ashland Municipal Code 9.28.090, that extends the use of this poison. I would like to see the code reversed or at a minimum adjusted so the city is only allowed to spray this application within one-half mile of any resident, public foot traffic, or area near a stream. This new ordinance is so unclear. There are no boundaries and is open to interpretation, but does nothing to protect the public. You talk about safety for workers. Trained workers should know how to protect themselves from potential accidents, such as using cones or blinking lights on trucks to divert traffic away from work sites. Workers and park management taking their own steps to safety seems like a small ask rather than exposing children and other vulnerable citizens to poison. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now to public hearings. We have a series of hearings this evening that Sabrina will start us off for.
So we reviewed most of this during a study session. So tonight, Johan has brought forward the administrative changes for code as we discussed in that study session. So he'll give an overview of what changes are being made within the ordinance laid out within your packet. We will need to do a public hearing for each one, and then we'll be looking for motions as appropriate. And with that, I will hand it over to Johan. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor and Council. So as you'll recall, I believe it was the last study session. It might have been two ago. We went through three different tables of code changes. We are going to do this small group that council, as council directed, for anything of substance. However, there were some essentially administrative changes that needed to happen, and we brought those forward for you today. The first one is Ordinance 3260, an ordinance removing Section 2.29020P to reduce redundancy. This is the same identical language, is in the same section, but section F. So we're essentially striking a duplicate paragraph. Are there any questions on that?
Any questions of staff? The public hearing is open. Has anyone signed up to speak, Alyssa? No, I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve first reading of Ordinance 3260, removing 2.29.020P to reduce redundancy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry for the clunky motion.
Any discussion, Counsel Dale?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, sorry, moving on. Okay, my next one is 3262, which is an ordinance updating 2.54070 to allow for electronic payments of surplus property. So this is basically bringing things up to date with government auction websites, allowing people to use electronic payment rather than cash or check.
Any questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, have we received any requests for comment? No. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hanson.
Can I all take turns at these? I move to approve first reading of the following ordinance and schedule second reading on December 16 of 3262, an ordinance updating 2.54.070 to allow for electronic payments of surplus property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Counsel, would either of you like to speak?
Nope.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion pass. Did I open that? Did I open it? There's a lot.
I tried to think of the best way to do this, and this seemed like the most efficient way. So now on to ordinance number 3266, an ordinance updating 6.04.105, 6.04.120, and 6.04.130, so that all these fees are set, so that business license fees are set by resolution. This is essentially removing the fee section in each of these and just referring back to the other fee section that lays out all the miscellaneous fees.
Questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, do we have anyone who has signed up to speak to us? No. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Dale?
I move to approve first reading of 3266, an ordinance updating Chapter 6.04 so that business license fees are set by resolution and schedule second reading December 16, 2025.
Is there a second? Okay. Counsel Dale?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Sherrell? Would you like to care to speak to your motion? Any additional discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. Ordinance number 3274, an ordinance updating AMC Chapter 6.42 Tobacco Control to reflect state changes in tobacco retail licensing and administer fees by resolution. So this does two things. One, it gets rid of the local license requirement, which has happened back in 2022. The state basically took over that and then moves any fees to the resolution, miscellaneous fees resolution.
Questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, do we have anyone who has signed up to speak to us? No. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Kaplan?
I move to approve first reading of ordinance number 3274, an ordinance updating AMC Chapter 6.42 Tobacco Control to reflect state changes in tobacco retail licensing and administer fees by resolution. Second.
Counsel Kaplan? Counsel Bloom?
No.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 3277, an ordinance updating 14.12.020, so fees are set by resolution. This is the same thing, moving the electric fees from two places in the statute to just the miscellaneous fee book.
Are there any questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak to us on this issue? No. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hanson?
I move to approve first reading of 3277, an ordinance updating 14.12.020, so fees are set by resolution and schedule second reading December 16, 2025.
Is there a second?
A second.
Counsel? Counsel? Any further discussion? Counsel Duquesne?
Yes, Johan, can you say what that is for again?
Yep, sorry, that's moving.
It's 3277.
Oh, yeah, so essentially, there were charges listed in there for new construction, meter setting, single-phase service, and three-phase service. And all these fees are also listed in the miscellaneous fees book. So when people are putting in new electrical systems, they're now listed in, they're currently listed in two places. This is moving them all to one place.
And the fee is set by resolution?
Yeah, council has already set the number for these fees. The number is not changing at this point. It's just taking it out of two spots. Or taking it out of one spot.
And they were already in the, yeah, no, okay.
Any other questions? Counsel Dale?
Questions or?
Questions.
Oh, no.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Yes, we were in a, we were in discussion space. We allowed a question. Okay, any further discussion?
Sure.
Counsel Dale?
Yeah, I'll just speak to it real quick, just for clarification. The public is part of this, and I think Johan, you'd agree. What we want is we want to not have actual fees codified in an ordinance because it's just clunky and it's not, it doesn't make for good code. So it's really nothing that we're actually changing. We're just making it more efficient by putting it in a resolution so that we can make those changes efficiently. Is that, would that be correct?
That's correct, yeah. Everything's already listed, but it's boring in the miscellaneous fee book.
Right, yeah, I would agree with that. That's the right thing to do.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Counsel Dale. Yeah, we're taking the actual numbers out and putting them in a separate document so they can be evergreen, so we don't have to go back and change ordinance.
If there's no further discussion, roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. Ordinance number 3278, an ordinance updating 14.12.050, Section D, to correct for the proper federal agency name, just like it sounds. We're removing Federal Power Commission to replace with the updated Federal Energy Regulation Commission.
Questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak with us? No. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Bloom?
Yeah, I move to approve first reading of Ordinance 3278, an ordinance updating 14.12.050, Section D, to correct the proper, for the proper agency name.
Second.
Counsel Bloom?
Nope.
Counsel Dale?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. Ordinance number 3279, an ordinance updating 14.12.060, subsection B, subsection 1, so fees are set by resolution. This is still in the electrical system, same thing, consolidating with the miscellaneous fee book.
Questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak with us on this issue? No. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve first reading of 3278, an ordinance updating, correction, I'm sorry. I move to approve first reading of ordinance 3279, an ordinance updating 14.12.060.B.1, so fees are set by resolution and schedule second reading December 16, 2025.
Is there a second? Counsel Dale?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Hanson? Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number 3280. This is an ordinance updating 14.12.080 to correct for the proper ORS reference, formerly known as ORS 456.763, is now currently revised statute ORS 455.420. We're just correcting it.
Any questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak with us? No. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion.
I move to approve. Thank you. I move to approve first reading of the following ordinance and schedule second reading December 16, 2025, 3280, an ordinance updating 14.12.080 to correct for the proper ORS reference.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Sherrell? Would you care to speak to your motion?
No, thanks.
Counsel Bloom?
No.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, and my last one for potentially the most boring public hearing ever. Ordinance number 3281, an ordinance updating 14.16.020 to align with the state ORS. In this one, we're removing the language that was copied from the ORS and just citing directly to ORS Chapter 225.
Any questions of staff? I open the public hearing. Alyssa, has anyone signed up to speak with us on this issue? No, ma'am. I close the public hearing. The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hanson?
My pleasure. I move to approve first reading of 3281, an ordinance updating 14.16.020 to align with state ORS and schedule second reading December 16, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Hanson? Counsel Bloom? Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Motion pass. Thank you. And while that is government at its most riveting, it's important that we do this, that we clean this up, that our code reflects the information the way it is and that it's accurate. So thank you. I recognize it's probably not the most exciting thing to prepare for us this evening either, but this is all part of good governance. So thank you, Johan, and thank you to the council for moving us through that. We now move on to the second reading of Ordinance 3255, an ordinance relating to liquor license review, repealing and replacing AMC Chapter 6.32. Sabrina?
So we reviewed this last council, so we're happy to answer any questions otherwise.
Any questions of staff? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 3255, an ordinance relating to liquor license renewal, repealing, replacing AMC Chapter 6.32.
Counsel Hanson?
Yeah, I think that this is one of those improvements in efficiencies that we're being proactive about, that our wheels of government will go faster for the businesses that are applying for these. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the the updated, when I was growing up, the OLCC was Oregon Liquor Control Commission. And now the OLCC is now the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission. And I would like to use this opportunity to suggest that the city of Ashland moved to substituting the word marijuana with the word cannabis for all of our communications, like other communities have done. I sent an email to my colleagues this afternoon citing the state of Washington, which has moved to remove the use of the word marijuana in favor of the word cannabis, which is a scientifically more correct term and also culturally appropriate to describe this plant medicine as opposed to some of the history around the word marijuana. So it's with support for improving efficiencies and also using the opportunity to suggest we switch our language. Thank you.
Counsel Duquesne? Did you second?
Yes, I did, but I have no comments.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
And just to follow up to that, Counsel Hanson, you had made a request of the council to, if I'm understanding correctly, to direct staff to change the language that we use to speak about cannabis. That would be on the floor right now if we would like to provide that direction. Counsel Bloom?
I've not opposed. My only consideration is for legal purposes. Marijuana tax is, there's a legal definition there. So though I completely agree with where you're coming from, I just want to check with legal to make sure that at least when we're talking about something that the state uses for legal purposes, that we're consistent so that we don't end up not getting the tax revenue because we used the wrong word. That's my only, that's my only thing.
Yeah, it's a really good thing to point out. It's, the two statutes are ORS 475C and .600 and 475C .674. The state does refer to it as the marijuana tax. and .600 and 475C .674. The state does refer to it as the marijuana tax. I fully support council referring to it as cannabis, and I appreciate the email. I had no idea of that background. But I do think, and I'd have to look into it and see if any other Oregon cities have changed, but I think that there would be concern with misalignment with how it's referenced by the state.
So, maybe what we could be thinking about is that when we're referring to that specific law, that we call it what the state calls it, but that when we use the term in any other description, that we would use the term cannabis. Would that make sense to you, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, are there any questions of Counselor Hanson? Counselor Dale?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Counselor Hanson. I was just thinking about how to kind of modify that and aligning with the intent. It might be something that the staff direction for the council to consider would be, first steps would be to investigate changing that, and then we could have a more fulsome discussion about that at that time and what the intent is. But all pointing in the right direction, but just following what I would say would be a proper procedure, just to make sure that all our eyes are dotted and these are crossed, if you're good with that.
I appreciate it. I'd be happy to read my email for more context, but I think this does it justice, and I appreciate the open consideration, and I hope the whole state moves like Washington does to replace the word marijuana with cannabis. Thank you.
So, we just need to get clear if we've got council direction to staff to take a look at this and see if there's, you know, anything else besides the marijuana tax that's problematic. Is there interest in having staff look at that? Okay. Do you need anything else from us to provide direction? Okay, great. Thank you. We move on now to second reading of ordinance 3272, an ordinance annexing property and withdrawing an annexed area from Jackson County Fire District Number 5, and also repealing ordinance 32, ordinances, excuse me, 3215 and 3194, which were the previous annexation approvals in Casita 1 and Casita 2 at 1511 Highway 99, planning action number PA-T3-2024-0001. Sabrina?
So, we had a pretty extensive review of this at the last council meeting. Director Goldman is here for any follow-up questions, but we are looking to move this past second reading tonight.
I do have one comment. As noted, ordinance 3272 was approved at first reading on November 4th. The ordinance before you, ordinance 3272 indicates in the sixth whereas clause that that public hearing was on August 19th, but as you'll recall, it was postponed to November 4th. And so, that's Scribner's error. We would look to correct with council's direction and have that ordinance that is signed by council reflect the change of date from August 19th to November 4th relating to the date of the public hearing.
So, do you have a suggestion about how we might do that?
I think if council approves second reading as amended to the date, we will bring back a document for your signature.
Okay, great. Questions of staff? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Bloom?
I move to approve second reading of ordinance number 3272, an ordinance annexing property and withdrawing the annexed area from Jackson County Fire District Number 5, and repealing ordinances 3215 and 3194, which were the previous annexation approvals for Casita 1 and Casita 2. I further move to approve the findings for planning action number PA-T3-2024-00011, including the exception to the Affordable Housing Phasing Standard in AMC 18.5.8.050.G4, Section G4, and further move the dates be amended as listed in the packet, and to adopt the planning commission's findings by reference as the council's own.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Bloom?
No, I appreciate just moving this forward. It's a really good development opportunity, increase housing capacity here in Ashland, which is hopeful. We obviously had a very long, lengthy discussion around this, so nothing more to add.
Counselor Dale?
I echo what Counselor Bloom said. I appreciate all the hard work of staff, Brandon and your team. Thank you very much, and just look forward to actually, like we talked about a few weeks ago, to actually taking action and seeing it come to fruition. Thank you for your hard work.
Any further discussion? Counselor Sherrell?
Yeah, I was just gonna say thanks to you and your staff for putting this forward again. Maybe the third time's the charm, and hopefully we get some needed housing built. So, thank you.
There's no further discussion. Roll call please, Alyssa. Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. And thank you, Brandon. We are now to unfinished business, the request to begin the surplus property process for the imperatris property.
Sabrina?
So, we're here tonight to ask council if they would like to move forward with the surplus property. So, we were talking about the imperatris property. This property was originally purchased to support wastewater effluent. We've upgraded the treatment plant, and we no longer need that site as its original intended purpose. We've held on to it ever since, but since we have no future needs, we are looking to move forward with making a change with that property. So, Dr. Fleury is here tonight to walk us through what that process would look like.
This is not a public hearing. So, just a quick summary, as the city manager said, the imperatris property was purchased in 1996 to support wastewater treatment plant operations. Basically, the intent was to spray effluent on the hill and create sludge ponds. Through a public process, the city council at that time deemed to go a different direction, and so the existing treatment plant was fully improved to tertiary system, three-stage system. And so, since that time, we've been doing ongoing wastewater treatment planning efforts, and we finally got into the stage where we know that that property is no longer needed or viable for a wastewater application. It's been leased over the years, basically for farming, cattle grazing, to help create some vegetation management on the site itself. And then, it's also been looked at from a biological and ecological standpoint by some of the local conservancy groups as well. And in your packet is kind of an ecological assessment that was performed years ago when there was talk about installing a solar facility on that site as well. So, there's some background for the council and everyone on that. Now, the surplus of public property requires a very specific and onerous process, and it's defined in ORS. The city council needs to hold a public hearing on the surplus of the property. It has to initiate a specific public notice, and that public notice has to have a few things within it, a description of the property, potential proposed uses, why it's necessary to sell the property, the nature of terms of how the city would go about selling that property, and then any appraisal information we have. And so, that's what we're asking the council to help us initiate, is moving forward to that public hearing process is part of the first step here. So, one of the things that we've been talking about between the Parks Department and Public Works for years is the potential expansion of the wastewater treatment plant facility. There is Parks managed land adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant facility right now. That Parks land was purchased with conservation dollars from the state, so that puts specific restrictions on that property. And one of the things that we've talked about, since that property has restrictions, is since we no longer need the imperatris property, could we potentially look at doing some sort of land swap? Now, what that means is the Parks would be able to swap that property with the imperatris potentially, if approved by the state. So, they have to go through a process that, yeah, the imperatris property would represent a higher and better use from an environmental and Parks recreation standpoint than the land adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. So, we've had those conversations for years now, and Director Houston is actually coordinating with the state right now to see what the potential is, if those restrictions still exist on that property. It was actually bought as part of some Greenway expansion work that was done decades ago. So, we don't have that information back from the state on what that would look like yet, as the director's working with them to find that out. And we've also worked with the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy over the years on potential options to take some level of ownership or interest in the property to maintain the ecological and conservation benefits. Specifically, what we've talked about is the upper portion above the talent irrigation ditch of that property. And they've been an interested partner, and I think Steve Wise is here tonight to provide some comment from the Land Conservancy on this. The other thing that we looked at as part of this land swap is, is there any development potential on a portion of that current Parks property adjacent to the treatment plant that we would need for a wastewater-related expansion for the plant itself? And so, we worked with planning to figure out what the lot sizes would look like, how a potential layout could be. And so, there is the potential to partition off a portion of that area adjacent to the plant to provide for housing and development as part of an overall surplus swap kind of co-mingled process. Now, talking about our divestment options, one of the things we've talked about is how best to move forward, knowing that we still need to work through the state land swap process potentially. And so, what the staff has recommended as part of our discussions internally is to partition off the lower portions of the tax lots below the ditch, or just partition at the ditch line below, because all of those tax lots below the ditch have a water right on that ditch. So, they are, have a higher monetary and development value than what's above the ditch from a development standpoint. We would maintain ownership of the upper portion tax lots after this partition went through, and then sell the lower portion outright, and then continue to try to coordinate what a sale or lease would look like with potentially Southern Oregon Land Conservancy or the Parks Department managing a long-term lease or sale. There's still some things to be worked out on that avenue. The other option is just to sell all 846 acres outright through a process, sealed bid, auction, or public posting. We have a real estate agent on retainer now who can help facilitate sales of city properties for us as part of a process. There is the potential, based on ORS, that the city could just release interest of the upper portion of the ditch to the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy with no monetary backing, and that places a 20-year restriction on the use of that, has to be for a conservancy-related use before anything else could be done with the property, or do nothing, in which Public Works would continue to do some minimal fire management on that property prior to fire season. I don't know if we would look to lease it again, potentially, at least the lower section. That would be something we would have to talk about internally. And so, this is just a kind of a little quick sketch showing what we're talking about, about partitioning off the portions below the ditch. So, there's one, I think it's a 65-acre parcel, and then that other bigger parcel is a little over 400 acres. My quick polygon mathematics puts that portion of that tax lot getting partitioned at about 300 acres would be below the ditch line, or at the ditch line to below with that other 65 acres as the potential portion to surplus directly and sell. We would protect the upper tax lots based on that partition line, and then also make sure that we have access to the upper portions of the tax lots through some sort of ingress and egress access easement. So, some of this, we would have to work through the Jackson County land use process to develop this, you know, overall and get this approved, get the partitions approved, ensure that there's still access, because we can't land lock parcels as part of a partitioning process. So, we would have to go through that, and that's generally staff's recommendation for the process and the property itself.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, great. Good to see you, Scott. It's been a while. So, my question is kind of around this idea of the land swap, and specifically around the wastewater treatment plant, that piece of property, right, which has housing development potential. Is the only mechanism to be able to access that for housing development through a land swap? Is there no other means to be able to kind of get that property back for development?
So, if the current thought and the restrictions are in place, that it needs to be used for a park recreation purpose, that locks it in. If it is no longer needed for that purpose, and that's what Director Houston's trying to determine with the state, then there still is, without the land swaps, there is the potential for partitioning off and developing some units over there. We, from the Public Works side, look at it, we need access to a portion of that property for future expansion. So, we'd like to protect our interest a little bit in that as well. One of the things that happened when the plant was expanded and kind of redeveloped in the late 90s, early 2000s is the limit of the plant was defined as the limit of the plant, and didn't take into account at that point potential future expansion. And we know from our studies that at some point, we're probably looking at needing a third oxidation ditch, better circulation pattern for trucks, and more area above as well. So, that's why we would like to see our ability to get some of that property for Public Works in the wastewater operation. It's just dependent on what level the state says the restrictions are still in place.
Right. So, just to be clear, hence the idea of holding off on the upper for now, because that might be our only tool to get access to this other property?
Correct.
And until that's sorted, and if the state says, yeah, no, you're good, you don't need it as a park, then we could sell the upper part and then gain access for development and for your purposes?
Correct.
For wastewater treatment. Fine. Great, thank you.
Yeah, and there's, if the state says that it's still restricted and you can swap, there's a very specific process that we have to go through with appraisals of the adjacent property, appraisals of the upper portion, and an analysis about the environmental recreation benefit change.
Quick follow-up, if I may? Sorry, but that opened up another question. Have we already done at least a cursory look to see if the upper part of imperatris actually meets that threshold? So, that way, we know that there's some degree of confidence.
Just in our discussions internally, we think that that is a logical conclusion.
Okay, great. Cool, thank you.
Counselor Sherrell?
Yeah, can you go back? One, Scott, can you tell me what those circles are representing?
Those are access points. So, one of the circles is off Irish Lane, and one of the circles is off Butler Creek.
And the ones from the west, like those would have to be our takeoff points from ingress egress. Is that the theory of the circles?
So, the one off of Mountain is through private property, and what we've done in the past is asked for access across their private property. So, it's not a direct link to the imperatris property off of North Mountain itself. The other two circles to the west are direct access to that one strip tax lot.
That we have deeded?
Direct connection to, correct.
And then, Mayor, if I could?
Yeah.
As far as like the language that is maybe deed restricting the lower lot that's beside the current plant, it sounds like Rocky is looking into possible swaps. Have we had that looked at by legal, and have we asked the state if there's exceptions? I mean, every question we don't ask is a no.
Yeah, I mean, we've all sat down together and gone through it. The two big issues are waiting for the state to tell us what restrictions actually remain, because our first, or probably our fourth reading through it, we started thinking maybe it was possible that it wasn't so restricted. And the other kind of almost bigger delay is getting what I believe is just referred to as the yellow book value, so the exchange value figured out. Like, would it cover it, would it not? You know, we think it will.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can elaborate on that, less of can we swap it, more of can we meet the two state housing goals that we have for housing to say, hey, can we remove the deed restriction if we do A, B, and C? Like, have we even explored that and gotten a no?
Yeah, we haven't gotten a no.
Have we asked?
We were pitching to them, is this possible, and seeing what's coming back.
Okay, awesome. And I, can I just say one more thing, that maybe it might be worth looking at coming with an idea and a proposal. Like, it's, we have the burden of proof to say, hey, this might be a better idea, and let the state tell us no. That would be my suggestion.
Agreed. Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. Just to underline what Counselor Sherrell just mentioned, I wholeheartedly agree to present something to them, and then they can come back, and so at least they have some idea to go off of. But in doing so, question to legal is, do you know, in doing that, when we might get answers back?
Nope.
Months, years? We don't know.
I don't know, and I know that one of the hangups is there might be, maybe that's on a different property, actually. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sherrell?
Yeah, I'm sure you're probably aware of it. I mean, Brandon's probably talked you through this, but we now have a housing accountability and production office at the state level that's literally designed to help developers and cities answer questions in this realm-ish. Maybe worth looking into.
And I think one of our issues is the record keeping associated with that, and having the state find the records. And so, that's why it's probably going to take a little bit of time, because this acquisition and grant information is decades upon decades old.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, have we, I didn't see it anywhere. Maybe it was in there, and I just skipped over for some reason. What are we thinking in terms of value that we're going to get out of this financially?
So, we had a general appraisal done, and the lower, we had them break it apart, lower section, upper section, and 2.4 on the lower section and 1.4 on the upper section was the appraised estimated value. And that was a 2020. And that was a 2024 appraisal. Or a spring of this year.
Spring of the, spring of this year. Okay, so that gives us an idea of potential revenue for both properties and for those that are interested in buying, how much they would need to come up with.
Correct.
Great.
And that could change based on the different appraisal process if we had to go through that through the land swap.
Right. Okay.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so along the lines of Counselor Bloom's question, I guess what I would, what I would be, would be interested in knowing is, so while an appraisal could come in and certainly the taxing authority and so forth would figure out what would be a theoretical real market value, what really would be the question is, is, is it really develop, is it really worth that from a development standpoint, right? I mean, you have issues with power, you have issues with potentially water, you have issues. So we talked to any of our, our real estate entity that we contract with to say what, what, because I, I want to just make sure that we're not looking just at an appraised value in a vacuum without understanding because it, you know, if we do that and then it just sits for another forever, I just, I want to make sure that we were as informed as possible relative to that if we've, we've looked into that.
And I think Counselor Sherrell mentioned that a while ago. One of the things that we would do if we get the green light to go to the next steps is to engage our real estate agent or potentially a developer and get some more honed-in information about how to potentially partition it in a different way. You know, right now, we're talking about everything below the ditch, but is there something else that we would look at as an option to maybe make smaller lots or bigger lots? And talk to them about an overall process and what would that look like from a development standpoint? And we'd engage them in that discussion. And then we're also most likely going to have to engage a local planning firm to help us get through the Jackson County land use process for partitioning the lot as well. So it's going to be a little bit of a process on staff's side to navigate all of those little hoops.
Counselor Captain?
Yeah, thanks. That's a nice dose of realism about what, what it would take both to partition it and to then develop it separately. I'm interested, I mean, I'm interested in the interest of the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy and what, I understand that there's been conversations and obviously there's in the packet a letter that expresses some interest. Could you tell us a bit about the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy's interest in the upper portion by itself, the upper portion plus the lower portion, the upper portion and part of the lower portion? What's, what's the nature of the conversations that's going on there?
And if we want, we can call.
You can, Steve can come up. I'll just say real, at high level, you know, they're interested in the whole property. They're very interested, at least in my conversations and recollection, in the upper portion and protecting the upper portion and restoring it and providing some curated access as part of an overall land conservancy program. And they could potentially be interested in purchasing it or leasing it in a long-term management operation, either from Public Works or from Parks, depending on the land swap related issue. But Steve can point to that more in a public comment section as well.
And just to follow up on that, and that, so if we were to go that route with either a long-term lease or a sale, that wouldn't necessarily involve partitioning and all of those hoops that you were just talking about having to jump through with Jackson County planning.
For the whole property, yes.
For the whole property.
Correct.
If they were able to purchase it.
Yes.
Or even most of it. If, you know, a smaller partitioning might be, might actually be less sonorous than partitioning into several different lots.
Correct.
Because I'm interested also in the, I'm interested in, you know, the efficiency of getting it done, getting it into, you know, useful use, conservation and recreational uses, not having to wait a ton of time and go through a bunch of hoops to try to, you know, to try to get it, get it split up and, and developable. It also would, it would make that whole question with the state kind of moot as well if it just, if it were going to, if we were going to go to the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, we just go ahead and do the swap. So whether the state says, yes, we still need to swap the, the adjacent area to the sewage treatment plant or not, we would just have done it and we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to wait for an answer. So in terms of time, it could save us a lot of time to actually get everything done more efficiently?
Potentially, and I, I'll say this, our goal is to only manage it for one more fire season from Public Works. So that's our internal goal.
Yeah.
From our standpoint, so we would look at trying to hustle this through next year because we've been managing it for so long and so many different means and mechanisms. And so, yeah, that's our internal goal.
So that's a good point. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up on this line. So that, yes, I totally agree. I don't think we should be managing it for, for fire. We should, so if we can get the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy to take it on and do that, if we were to do that through a lease or a sale, what's, with, as a lease agreement, they would still have responsibility to protect it for fire?
For the whole property, and we would have to formally outline that in the lease document, and that would be, would have to come back to council for approval. And I believe it's a 99-year maximum, but the timing would also be a consideration for discussion as part of that potential option.
Okay. But that's conceivable that we could do that within the year before next fire, one more fire season?
One more fire season, correct.
Thanks.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. And a question for you and/or Sabrina. With the sale of this property, where can, where can we expect the money to land? And is there a play to get it into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Or could you walk us through what it looks like after the sale?
So food and beverage money dedicated to the wastewater plant purchased the property. So it was granted to the enterprise fund. So kind of the general budget rules and requirements would state that the revenue from a sale go back into the wastewater fund itself to be reutilized for maintenance, capital investment. And I think I said in the staff report, that's potentially a rate reduction or, you know, an offset in future rate implications by having the sale of this property go into that fund. And that's one of the reasons we also looked at, well, we know we don't need that whole parcel adjacent, so how could we maximize that by, you know, offering additional square footage lot size for residential or multifamily development? I forget the zoning off the top of my head, but that's one of the reasons we looked at that option. We talked about something that that could be land banked for potential future affordable housing as well as an option. If we had that route and it's not burdened by some sort of state restriction where you could partition it off and have it developable to a certain degree.
So it sounds like it stays in that, it stays in that silo unless we learn otherwise. And it's, it's got to stay within wastewater treatment.
Correct.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I mean, I think that that opens up an interesting conversation. I mean, we just had a conversation last night that we've got a 2.4 million in compounding structural deficit that we need to face. And so I'm really curious, is there any legal workaround so that that doesn't just go into wastewater and we could put that into something like the reserve fund? Because we know we want to grow our reserves so that we can cover that, and we have a number of other potential capital needs as well. So outside of services, but what can we do to actually solve this budget situation? What options are available to us?
Yeah, I don't know the full answer off the top of my head. I would say that if, if Public Works has infrastructure needs, obviously they can use that money from, you know, that, for that project, and that frees up general fund money that they were going to have to draw on. In that way, I guess it's not a workaround, but it's, you know, it's funds that they needed to borrow or, you know, or they needed from the city that are no longer needed from the city.
Okay. And then quick follow-up, and, and I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but something worth exploring. Is it possible to say, okay, it needs to go into an enterprise fund, but maybe we don't put it all into wastewater? Because I know we're going to be discussing rates around wastewater, but those are not as high as some of the other rates. So could we look at maybe breaking some of that funding out into the water fund or the electric fund, for example?
So we can check, but I think, you know, we're talking about maybe $2 million here, and wastewater has some infrastructure capital needs still. We need to finish the storage at the Imperatris property, which we need capital funds for. So I think council has an opportunity here to do several things, which is get some of those capital projects for wastewater done with funding that's already available if we make this transition. In swapping the land, I know that housing is a large priority. There's a potential to have lots that we can restrict for affordable housing or work on making them workforce housing or something in the like. So I, I don't know that a workaround is necessary for such a small dollar amount, considering the capital needs of the wastewater fund. So I think I would keep it with wastewater with its original intent, and I would focus on, you know, wastewater bought this land. We don't need it. So how do we get the maximum value out of it to ensure that the wastewater enterprise is good, can do its projects? And then how do we achieve other goals in that process? Whether it's working with the land conservancy, making that land trade, and getting some housing out of it? I don't know that kind of any other direction is really that viable when I, I think a path forward that keeps it within that fund is appropriate.
Thank you. A quick follow-up.
Let's go to Scott first.
Just to build on what the city manager said, and we'll hit on this more in the facility master plan discussion, but one of the things that we've been planning for for years that cost blew up in our face was divesting of B Street and relocating our operations from B Street to Hardesty. That opens it up for facility plan discussion, or it opens it up for multifamily residential development on that lot as well. So that's one of the other things that is all in the mix as part of this overall discussion.
Yeah. No, thank you. I appreciate that. Because I, I mean, I do think that, you know, obviously we need to be thinking in context of the budget, and so capital is a huge driver right now and, and, and obviously, as I mentioned, the reserve fund, but totally point taken about capital, and I think that that's a, that is also a really great use of it. With the, the land swap, though, I mean, like I said, you guys are exploring the potential where we don't have to swap the land with parks, right? So that we can just get rid of this, we can get that land for housing development, and that land wouldn't have to be deed restricted for affordable, right? I mean, it could be market rate and generate good property tax revenue or increased property tax revenue for us that we severely need as well.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Captain?
Yeah, it sounds like the swap, though, would ought, because the swap would, and part of the reason for swapping would be to expand, at least use a portion of that land for wastewater treatment plant that would satisfy, because that has a value. That property that's adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant has a value. So to the extent that the sale of the property or whatever we do with it after it's put into parks would actually satisfy some of that, some of that would already then be taken care of. Because the value of that land adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant is much smaller, but it's probably more valuable than the larger parcel that's, that we're talking about there. What's the value of the, of the land adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant?
Oh.
It's, how many acres did you say it was?
Yeah, I, I'm drawing a blank on it. We do have an appraisal on it. It's a few hundred thousand dollars because some of it is currently wetland. So it'd have to be mitigated. So one of the things that we've talked about is if there are no restrictions on that and that property has a value, that we would look to purchase that property from parks for wastewater expansion, still looking at partitioning off for future development, housing development up at the south end of the area there.
The south end. What's the total size?
Yeah, because. 7,800 square foot for the lots is kind of that minimum size, minimum or maximum.
What's the total acreage of that? Do you know?
A little over four acres.
Four acres.
Yeah.
And a portion of it is wetland, the north, northern?
The, the eastern side, adjacent to the oxidation ditch, there's a storm drain outfall right at the end of the road, and that has created a wetland. So that wetland would have to be mitigated for us to expand in that area and construct a third oxidation ditch.
Thanks.
So Scott, I had some questions about the, the conversations that have been ongoing about Imperatris, particularly around the recreational values of the entire space. So when we're looking at what we do with this in the longer term, am I correct in, in thinking that we need to be thinking about how do we access the upper portion from the lower portion? Is that's correct, right?
Correct.
We need to make sure that we have access points. And if those recreation, if those are recreational access points, it would seem to me that it would make sense to make a plan for the entire, the entire property rather than trying to break it up and sell those other smaller parts first. It would seem, is there anything in the way of us essentially creating a, a plan for the entirety of the property before making decisions about selling any of the lower portion?
You know, we've talked with the land conservancy about coordinating that effort to, you know, when we go through this process, to ensure that access and turnarounds and things like that are constructed as part of a partitioning process, that easements are granted for access or right of ways, however we would go through that, to ensure that that area is then accessible in perpetuity through our land use process. And we've talked with the land conservancy about coordinating with them to do that. We have, we've talked a little bit about trying to master plan, you know, that whole area, but then I think we get into, you know, from my standpoint, a timing-related issue because that could get drawn out depending on how many stakeholders and anything that gets invested into that structure moving forward when we've kind of already laid a little bit of groundwork for the upper and lower discussion as part of an overall process.
Well, and that's, I think that kind of leads right into where my concern would be. I mean, I think I would be, I, I wonder if we have been speaking to anyone who is focused on agricultural production, because that's another element of resilience and long-term sustainability is having more food produced locally. But if we break it up into chunks and then whoever buys it, buys it, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to move into agricultural production. So I've been wondering if there has been any conversation with agricultural trusts or any other entities? There's a lot of interest right now in actually putting working lands to work, not necessarily just selling them to whoever might want to buy them and put a house on them. Have we had any conversations with any of the agricultural interests in the valley?
Not as part of this process right now. And I think, you know, I mentioned maybe partitioning into smaller lots, but the simplest thing to do from a planning standpoint would just be to partition, or just partition the one lot into two lots, split that 400 acres up, and that lets someone else, you know, figure out what to do with it. But that could be part of a marketing outreach process for surplusing it. And there could be discussion by the council about restricting the use of those as part of that surplus and sale as well. Those are kind of policy-related decisions you would have to kick around.
Great. So we do have Steve Wise from SOLC, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, is here to speak with us this evening. Steve, the standard is three minutes. I don't know if the council is interested in having any specific question and answer with SOLC, but let's go ahead. We'll give you three minutes and then we'll see if there's anything additional. I know we had some questions about SOLC's interest earlier.
Thank you. Yes, so my name is Steve Wise. I'm Executive Director of Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, and we appreciate the opportunity to talk about Imperatris and its conservation. As you saw in our letter, this is a piece of land that has been on our priority list as a high-value conservation opportunity for a long time. We've worked with the city and others to look at how that can be protected and there's a number of ways to do it, obviously. And while it's true that the, the area above the ditch is the highest conservation value, the most intact habitats, the most diverse landscape in terms of its natural value, I think it's also true from our standpoint that the best management for conservation land is the larger space and to manage it in whole without a partition. There's a couple of reasons for that. Partly, that has to do with the habitat value, that even though the, the area below the ditch is heavily grazed and more impacted, it still has value for migratory animal connectivity, things like deer and elk, birds and pollinators, and many, many others. So although it's less ecologically intact than the upper area above the ditch, it still has potential ecological value. The other, second point is- The other, second point is we have easements as well on working lands. So conservation can apply to active ranch land, active farmland, active irrigated agricultural land. And so to say that, that only the area that hasn't been impacted would be eligible for a conservation easement is an incomplete view of it. Almost half or more of our lands that are under conservation now are under these working lands easements. So that's a possibility for keeping the land in production in irrigated agriculture. We, you know, we would be encouraging to look at regenerative or sustainable agriculture and we believe there's a strong possibility of potentially building a coalition of groups to put that land to use for restoration, for regenerative management, for sustainable use and still be potentially in production. So there's, there's, it's not an either or, there's a both and solution there if the lower land is, is also part of the conservation package. And then the third one, you've talked about access. So having access, you know, because of the, the private land above does not have direct access to the land above the ditch, making that the lower land is important for access as well as these other potential land values. So looking at access or organizing the lower portion for, for access is important as well. Of course, part of what we do besides protecting land for people and for nature, we like to say we're helping create a culture of generosity. So we really like this idea of conveying the land to conservation without any cost. That's very efficient for us, obviously. And the notion of efficiency, doing it all at once is more efficient for us than trying to look at two different transactions. And I'm not sure, although I love the idea of getting in the conservation within a year, it's a little bit of a challenge if we're going to be fundraising for somewhere between one and three or more million dollars to see that happening in one year, but we would certainly like to try. And then we're really, one of the things we realize is that because some of the most valuable conservation lands are going on the market, we've been kind of trying to develop strategies to be more agile, to find resources that we can be responsive and do things quick, more quickly than the numerous multiple years it might take to otherwise raise funds for projects like that. So yeah, I think, you know, we, we're eager to work with the city as best we can to come out with a optimal conservation outcome. For us, the preferred option would be to do it all together, but we can see ways that, working with a partition but still looking for a conservation outcome on the lower portion as well would be the, the best scenario from our perspective.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer questions if you have more for us.
Sure. Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, great. Thanks so much for, for being here and willing to take some questions. So I, I really appreciate what you said on the, the last bit there. You do, your organization does have the capacity to, to purchase this.
Well, we, we strive to find the capacity to make major, make major acquisitions. We, we can't just write a check for $3 million. That's not how we work.
Of course.
Not, not yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I aspire to doing that too.
Hopefully eventually.
Yeah, my pockets get deeper by the moment.
You have a ramp. You have a, you have a, you would have a plan to, to get to that within a couple of years potentially?
We, we'd aim to do that, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Steve. I appreciate your, your letter and, and coming to speak with us tonight. I know that Southern Oregon Land Conservancy has been interested in this property for a long, long time. I've heard, I've heard whisperings of plans, but, but it's nice to have access to, to, directly to the source. We haven't been talking about recreational opportunities on that upper portion yet and I'm curious what Southern Oregon Land Conservancy's vision might be for aspiring to have a recreational component. I know that, that there's multiple uses that are really salivating at the opportunity. Hikers are always looking for, for more opportunities and people have been talking about, man, can, if we could hike down from Grizzly and that would be the holy grail to be able to make that connectivity. There's a, there's a high school mountain biking league that doesn't, isn't able to have events here because we don't have flat-ish rolling grasslands for, for trails, you know, which is the, the NICA, National Cycling Association test for, it's got to be, you know, a certain grade. But anyways, this property meets those standards. Hike, and then there's runners, of course, that, that, you know, think about, you know, their use and events and, I mean, people start to spin and we get excited about these things. So could you tell us how the conservation easement or historically what SOLC's opportunities have been with multi-use recreational dovetailing into your habitat conservation and all those great uses that are outlined in the letter?
Sure, yeah. There's a couple of different models. I mean, we, we partner with the city already at Orts and Todd Woods and Siski Mountain Park. So there's a conservation easement on publicly accessible park land that is open whenever the parks are open, which is all the time.
And, and that park has all those uses represented? Mountain biking, hiking, running?
I believe so, right. And, and, you know, each in its place. And then on the preserves that we own and manage as, as our preserve network, Pompadour Bluff is an example, we tend to take a piece of land, look at the conservation values first and foremost, where the sensitive habitats are, where the rare or protected plants and animal habitats, nesting and breeding areas, things like that, and then develop a recreation plan that avoids the most sensitive areas, makes the areas accessible at the best. We have a trail that was designed to be the softest line going up Pompadour Bluff that we could find and it also, you know, scenic and avoiding impacts as much as possible. On those lands that we are the preserve managers of fully, we tend to do what's called managed access, again, because the, the top value for the land for us is for the natural conservation values, which tends to be habitat for the more, more, what Dr. Robin Wall Kimmerer calls the, the more than human communities, not the people, everybody else, from, from bugs to snakes to, to lichen and moss, which I was really pleased the city's analysis looked at the lichens on imperatris. That's a really important indicator of habitat integrity and ecological integrity and function. So even down to the, the microscopic lichens on the rocks, those things matter. So we try to route people away from the most sensitive things and try to manage things in a way that you, you maintain the habitat values permanently and you provide access for people. So we know this is an area that's very interesting for bird watching and we've heard tell of people being interested in hiking and trail. Like you said, there's a dream to have a, a peak to valley trail and that's one of the potential routes. It still takes a lot more negotiation with the other landholders between that area and the peak, but it shortens the distance if that area is dedicated for, in part for recreation as well as for conservation of habitat. So we see a lot of potential there. It would take a recreation plan, again, to, to zone things out for things that would be less desirable to have people interacting and to steer people to the least sensitive areas. But it, we, we recognize, like I say, our, our three words are for people, for nature and forever. So we start with the human values and it's not necessarily opponent to the natural values. They have to be in balance.
Great answer. And a quick follow-up, if you may, Mayor. Is there an opportunity for infrastructure for, for, potentially for visitors if, if that recreational plan were to have access to the upper part? How would we, how would we get to it? Where would we park? Do you think that would?
Those are good questions and why the lower, the lower portion of the land is important that you probably need to have an access road, a parking area, you know? Again, we go for the minimal infrastructure that we can because that's the least impact, but things like benches even, a small shelter, informational kiosk, those sorts of things you might want to put along the way to help people understand the value of the land and, and raise awareness while people are having that experience of intact nature. That's what we try to do as well.
Okay, so it sounds like we would need to be mindful of those things when we're developing the lower portion. Thank you.
Definitely. I mean, especially for access because the, on the way across from, from the upper end is through private land and that would be, you'd have to purchase or negotiate an easement for access. And it's one of, the, two of the basic things that our organization always requires is one, that we have to have legal access if we're going to conserve land. And then the other part is that our commitment when we say we're conserving land is not to subdivide it. I mean, I understand there's a deep, deep need for housing, shortage of housing, available land. At the same time, we represent kind of undevelopment, places that are so special, so important in their ecological function that they need to be left alone and not subdivided and that the greatest conservation value of land is land that is still intact, that is not cut into pieces. So we're, somebody said we're looking for the maximum value for this land. We would say the maximum value of land is to have it be permanently conserved for the future. And I mean, I understand it's not the maximum cash value, that's not the same thing, but we're looking at values that are, other than that commercial value, that are equally important and, and really important part of the landscape that we live in.
Right. Which also touches on livability, economic development, you know, all those, all those other things.
And that, this land is, is in the viewscape, which makes.
Yes.
Livability and the, the, the actual atmosphere of being in this place is looking across at those hills and seeing hills.
That majestic grizzly as it starts to stack up with snow, right? Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and Steve, thank you. Just a huge shout out to you and your team and all the wonderful work that Southern Oregon Land Conservancy does. It's just a phenomenal organization.
Thank you.
This council, this body has talked a lot about renewed commitments to public-private partnerships and this is one that I think, in my personal opinion, is just one that is just a wonderful continued partnership, working with SOLC. Yeah, I, I think that that's very interesting and I would, I would certainly be very much interested in, in moving forward with this or, or something along these lines and promoting the values that we want and so forth. Now, again, to your latter point about housing, I don't, for me personally, I don't really see housing as too much of an option there. I mean, there's just too many, there's just too much infrastructure obstacles and so forth. So that would be something that we would, I would like to see us partner with an organization such as yours to be able to do this. But there is, to Counselor Bloom's point, there is, we have to look at some sort of value in that because it's, you know, we have to provide certain things for our budget and infrastructure. So what would you say in your experience based on other similar opportunities that you've worked on would be a timeline that we could consider? And I understand that, that the value of that may not be exactly what cash value is and this body needs to look at what the value, what part of the overall value is to your point about conservation and, and we'll call it non-cash values, right? But, you know, you heard from Scott that he's like one more year of fire.
Sure.
So it, it would be something that I would think we would like to see, would it be something that you would be, if we, if we, if this council were interested in, in pursuing this, would you, something that you and your staff could kind of prioritize as far as finding, so, you know, providing the information of what you think the, the value would look like that you, that would be, that you could come up with or that the SOLC would be interested in or think is reasonable and feasible, feasible so that we have a most informed decision? Because I certainly would like to go that route. We just need to make sure that it makes sense reasonably. Would it be within a year?
To, to, to come up with cash money to buy the land?
Or, no, not to just come up with the cash money, but to come up with what you think would be feasible that you could come up with.
That's a good question.
Hey, Counselor Dale?
Because I need to make that.
Counselor Dale? Sorry. I'll, I'll interrupt and save him the trouble of having to come up with that answer.
Yeah, oh, perfect.
Because it is, it is kind of two different statutes we're talking about.
Okay.
If we're talking about a transfer or a lease, whether it be, you know, 20 years or whatever with restrictions, that's one thing. If we're talking about what, what Director Fleury brought forward, which is, you know, essentially disposal of a surplus property, the first step would be doing the public hearing with proposed uses and at a time the council could discuss restrictions they'd like to put on that, but we can't open it up to one single party to buy. I mean, it is, it is a, we're, we're at stage zero and that's, you know.
Okay. And, and, and Johan, I appreciate that's fair very much and I appreciate you calling that out. So if I may, Mayor, just got a question for Johan. So thank you, Steve, by the way. I really appreciate it. So to, to that point then, just for clarification, so if this council decides to, to start the process, step zero as you call it, we're not committing to any particular way of, of doing something, whether it be, we're just, we're just saying to you guys, we want to start looking at things.
Correct. And Scott, I think you had it on your first slide. There's a process that involves, you know, we still have to get an appraisal on it.
Yeah.
And then proposed uses. So that, at that point, you know, talk about councils considering land conservancy or private sale.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're just not.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure that we're not making a premature commitment to something one way or another.
That's what I wanted to make sure of too.
Okay. No, that's, that's fine, but, but to, but to, just to close the loop on this and, and maybe my line of questioning might have been a little bit off base, we'll have to see and apologize if it was, but.
No, no, no.
Is, is something along the lines of, you know, asking, okay, so we start with step zero. So we start to open this up. What I was, I guess what I was asking Steve was something along the lines of just from a hypothetical, as we start to open this process up, maybe, you know, council myself in particular would say, well, okay, so what can I expect to be the timeline that, that Southern Oregon Land Conservancy would be able to produce some sort of thing as part of this process so that, you know, how long do I, you know, do I, do, for me, decision-making process, do I, do we wait, you know, when I'm up here making a decision or so forth? So that's kind of what I was, I was, sir, I was not just offering him the property.
What?
Right, right, right. That was not my intent.
That's not what I heard.
I was just trying to understand. Well.
That's not what I heard.
Fair, but that's really, just to clarify the intent, it was, is a matter of just so I could wrap my head around timelines of decision-making.
So I think if we think of like a flow chart, we're at the.
Zero.
Are we keeping imperatris as a wastewater property? Yes or no?
Okay.
So if the answer is yes, then we're done, right? If the answer is no, great, we have that decision. So now the one, two, three, four, five, six options, right, is kind of our next step. So getting the appraisal, you know, if we're interested in leasing, what would be required for a lease? I think we all need to understand that we can't just sell the property to one individual. It's a bid process. So I think the question tonight is, we're at the yes or no. Are we keeping it in wastewater or not?
Fair. I appreciate that.
Counselor Kappa?
Wow. I appreciate Counselor Dale stumbling around on this. I had kind of a similar stumbles to, 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 to go through myself. But I think one additional piece of information I'd just like to put on, you know, for staff thinking, because what I'm, where I'm seeing this is if we decide to go forward with disposal of this property, I would like to see further conversations between staff and Southern Oregon Land Conservation to see what that might be. And we talked about lease and we talked about purchase. I wonder if there's also opportunity for a lease to purchase over a certain period of time because I am interested, at least for a short, relatively short period of time, while an organization puts together the ability to purchase it so that it also gets it off our responsibility for fire in, in the next fire season. So I'm wondering if there may be some middle grounds there as well. And that's, I guess, a question, or I don't even have an answer for that.
We've talked about it, but we haven't fully investigated the legal and statute mechanics for that.
I think if it's going to be a transfer and not a true lease, the lease portion is separate than the transfer of property. So if you're going to open it up for a lease to own, you are opening that up for bid.
For anyone to lease it.
Is my concern, that's my, that's my temporary, non-final answer, but that is my, I believe that to be the case.
But you're.
There are two separate portions of the statute.
But, but as a.
I'm feeling confident in it.
But as a, but as a good attorney, you're going to go back and find a way that maybe we can do it.
We're going to find a way to observe the law.
So I, I have a question. So Steve, you had mentioned the, the opportunity to, to develop a coalition of organizations. I think you used that word, coalition, of organizations that, that would come together in some sort of a partnership if the, if the land was kept as whole. So, you know, can you just speak a little bit more to what, what you're envisioning with that? What kind of other organizations might be brought to bear?
Yeah, well, the, there's an Oregon Agricultural Trust that is parallel to our organization but works statewide specifically to conserve lands for their agricultural use in perpetuity. So that's a relatively new organization. I think they've been around, I don't know, three or four years perhaps. So that's one potential partner. There are local regenerative ranchers and agricultural folks that, that we've worked with in other cases that might be interested in partnering on the use of the land or some of the financing of the land potentially. And, and then there's agricultural education and training groups, like, I guess it's now Oregon Farm Corps, formerly Rogue Farm Corps, that looks for opportunities for training for young and next generation farmers and ranchers. opportunities for training for young and next-generation farmers and ranchers to get involved in the land, because, like we all know, the, the cost of entry into agriculture has to do with the cost of land. So for people who are the next generation of farmers and ranchers, it's very difficult to get started if they don't have access to land. So there's, there are programs and partnerships about developing training programs on available, conserved, but still working lands. So those are some examples.
Great, thank you. Counsel Sherrell?
I was just going to speak maybe to Bob's question earlier. I mean, if there is a, the objective is to let an organization come up with the money to purchase it, we could potentially look at an installment plan or different creative ways to sell it during public process, right? That would still capture the same, maybe intent. That's all I was going to add at that point. The kind of vote's already passed. Thanks, Mayor.
Are there any other additions or additional questions for staff or for SOLC's leadership?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I, I have a question about where we're at in the process. So I just heard that it's a yes or no, do we want to keep this as wastewater land, or do we want to start a process? But in the packet, it has a very specific recommendation from staff about starting to parcel off the lower portion. So my question would be, if the council this evening, with, with the proposed motion that's in the packet, does that set this partitioning process into motion? Or, so it would unless we say we specifically do not want it, we don't want that element moving forward, that in fact, what we're talking about in terms of setting this process in motion is to get the appraisal, to deal, figure out the land swap that we're already working on, and then to, to, to start to investigate what, what types of restrictions we might put on the different parts of the land in order to start to focus what that sale process might look like. Is that, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think that that would be the council policy direction to staff, to coordinate, I would say, with SOLC on what that process would look like, what access would look like, while staff coordinates on the land swap issue and develops what the formal financials would be as part of either a lease or a sale, and what the legal mechanics of that would look like.
Well, and the reason it's important now to be very clear is because for the public hearing portion of the, if it, if it, oh, boy, sorry. If it's to be a sale, we have to describe the land, and I believe we might even need like a survey, you know, of the whole portion. So if it's one piece of land, that's one public hearing. If it's one, the lower portion, a different piece of land, and we're partitioning it into two, that's a different hearing. That, that portion can still be partitioned up later or not, depending on whatever, but, but the initial surplusing of the property, we have to be very clear in what is happening. If it's going to be a lease, that's a different process altogether. It's not, it doesn't involve, I don't believe it involves the exact same public hearing if we're just going to lease them public works property, or wastewater, sorry, wastewater property.
But if, but if we're, if we intend maybe that in a sale process, that that sale process might include the, the, the lease-to-own process, then it is still the sale process, and we, we surplus it as a sale?
Correct. And you have to decide if it's one portion or two.
Right.
Or one portion or both, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Because the second portion could come later, too. You could, you know, retain the upper portion, sorry, I'm talking too much today. We could retain the upper portion for wastewater currently, and figure out what we want to do with that, surplus those lower portion.
But the lower portion, in order to surplus it, requires a partitioning process that's going to take a certain amount of time, right? That's not something that is, when I read the packet, it seemed to me that the, the reason for the, moving forward on the partitioning was that there was a, a big time lapse, but it doesn't necessarily seem like that's the case.
Well, we would have to hire a surveyor to create the boundary for the new parcel. If we cut that one tax lot above and below, they would have to do a survey, monument it, and then we would have to go through the land use process through the county to get them to approve that partition. So that's going to take, I would say, six to eight months easily, just to go through that process. Then that would define, as Johann said, specifically what you're selling, and we would say tax lot 300, tax lot 400, 80 acres, 330 acres, that's your actual surplus sale property.
Or we could say it's the whole lot.
Or you could say it's every single tax lot that the city owns as part of the imperatris, and in that public hearing, we would itemize each tax lot number, and the acreage is part of that, and then what the use of each of those tax lots would be. This tax lot's for access, this tax lot's for parking, you know, however, we can break it down, if it's council's direction to kind of continue to coordinate with SOLC on what that would look like, and the land swap issue that we're also working on.
Counsel Kepplin?
Yeah, Mayor, it sounds to me like, I mean, the question that Sabrina put to us is, do we want to, do we want to dispose of this property? I think that's one question we may be able to answer, you know, already here. It sounds to me like there may be a second question, though, which is, what's the right arrangements for it, whether it's partitioning it, whether it's doing the whole thing, what, what's possible with an organization like the Southern Oregon Land Conservancy. Seems to me that might be direction that we, we may want more information, more, more exploration between the two parties, to see whether that's viable, before we might want to just put it out on the open market for, you know, alternatively, but maybe give a certain amount of time to the staff and Southern Oregon Land Conservancy to, to explore that and come back with a, you know, a proposal that could work for both of us, and still achieve Scott's objective of only having one more fire season under our responsibility.
Yeah, I would say if we're at step zero now, that's step zero A.
Yeah.
As part of a process.
Yeah.
Counsel Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I, and that's part of why I fumbled through some, thanks for Counsel Kepplin articulating it much better than I did, is because I read the same thing in the packet, maybe differently as, as the mayor did, where I was looking like these were already things that we were thinking about and had to choose the, the different options. But as I, as I reread it again, goes back to Counsel Kepplin's comment, too, and, and the mayor's, where the, the motion at the end here just summarizes to, if we so choose, to direct staff to begin the surplus property process for the, for the lower portions, I mean, but we don't have to choose any of those things. That's, that's just when we read that motion, we're not, as Counsel Kepplin alluded to, I believe, it was, we're not locked into any of these things. So it's just, that is the yes, no, up-down. So then the, the question might be, for Sabrina, would be, what do you think the timeline would be if this council chooses, yes, we want to move forward with this process, that, that staff would come back with, and maybe there's a study session in between to talk about the things, or something like that, so we could get, I don't know, I'm giving, but what would be a process, or what would be the timeline you would think that staff would reasonably be able to come back with various options?
So I think if you're, yes, we want a surplus, it sounds like there's, what is just open market with the partition? What's going on with the land swap? And what kind of deal could we make with SOLC? Is that what I'm understanding?
Let's just say that was it. What would be a timeline to come back with answers to?
I think we can do early spring. But I think tonight, we need to know that you want to surplus this before we do all this work.
Right, exactly, completely.
So that, once we know that.
Right.
We can get more detail on all the information that we need.
Understood.
And, and just, just if, oh, go ahead, Scott.
I would just say, in that motion, it says the lower portion. What I would do is eliminate lower and just say the imperatris, commonly known as the imperatris property, considering the whole thing, because we are talking about some level of surplus of the whole property through this process.
Perfect, thank you.
Counsel Bloom?
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion.
It's not that time yet. Counsel Hanson?
Thank you. Would it be okay to, as, as part of this, to bake in a check-in with a study session at, at some point? I would love to have this body be able to know, an update, and also to, you know, just give some input. Maybe it's not a study session, maybe it's an executive session, but, but spring next year, sounds like a long time away to not know what's going on.
Well, we need time to gather the information, once you make the decision tonight. And so it would not be an executive session, it would be a study session. And we can call a special meeting for timeliness, because I know we're lacking study sessions in the spring due to holidays. So that's something we can consider, but we'll need time to get the information.
Okay, great.
Okay. As a reminder, we're basically in 2026 at this point, so.
All right, any, any other questions of staff? Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counsel Bloom?
Yeah, thank you. I move to direct staff to begin the surplus property process for the property commonly known as the imperatris property.
Counsel Bloom?
No, that was exhaustive. Thank you.
Counsel Kepplin?
No, I think it's been a good, good learning process, and I, I think we've got, I've got a lot better sense of, of this than I did coming into the meeting. So thank you very much to Scott, and Sabrina, Johann, and Steve Wise.
So I have a question about this motion. Just above the motion in our packet indicates several next steps. And the first of those next steps is to work through a Jackson County land use process to adjust lot lines, partition, tax lots, that would allow for the sale of the property below the TID ditch. Is that what we are talking about? We are, we are directing staff to go through those four steps?
No, you've not given that direction tonight.
Not given that direction tonight. Okay, I just want to make sure that we are clear on, on, that we're separating this motion from that list of steps. Correct, okay. Any other discussion? Any council members? I would just add that I think this is an incredible opportunity that most councils don't get. And when we think about what makes Ashland special, a big part of what makes Ashland special is that somebody at some point, sitting around a dius like this, decided to, to be very, very careful with large tracts of land. We see that with, with Lithia Park, we see that with a number of other parks. We've had folks come in who, I know we've been reminded that Siskiyou Boulevard was donated as, as property to this community, and we think about how, how all of those decisions have made the life that we have here in town. And so I'm glad to see staff bringing this forward. I'm glad to see us taking the amount of time that we're taking on it, because it's important when we think about, what are the things that we need to put in place to, to look after the future of this community, and also to look after our ability to, to grow food, our ability to make sure that the land around us is healthy, and that we have access to some of the most spectacular places in Southern Oregon. So I'm just very glad to see this conversation coming up, and glad to see community partners coming forward to help us. Counsel Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I do support this moving forward to look at the, the imperatris property in its entirety, all 800-plus acres. But I am looking forward to the possibility of the sale of the lower ditch, because, below the ditch, because after what our retreat yesterday, after what we saw, where we are financially, I believe that our infrastructure, taking this money and putting it back towards the wastewater treatment plant, hopefully taking some financial burden off of our ratepayers, I am all for that. The imperatris property is huge. So I think the land conservancy taking the upper portion, I think would be beneficial. We had some great, robust conversation around that. However, I look forward to the opportunity of the sale of the lower part of the imperatris, so that this money can go back towards the wastewater treatment plant, and therefore help the ratepayers when it comes time to look at rate increases.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kepplin?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Let's take a break. Let's take 10 minutes, please be back in your seats at 8:13 by that clock, Hannah. Hannah. Convenient. We had two agenda items pulled from the consent agenda today, Counselor Hanson. So, we'll take them up in turn, starting with the Resolution 2025-30, extending the pilot program for portable signs in commercial areas. Counsel Hanson.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to highlight that this program was a, something of a pie in the sky dream two or three years ago when our, our code didn't allow sandwich boards. And within the Chamber of Commerce and especially downtown, it was, it was really a sought-after tool. And I'm just really happy to see the, the work of the chamber and the local businesses that are utilizing this, finding value in it. And although it's a small thing, I just wanted to highlight the city's ability to, to, to change and adapt to the business community. And I'm glad to see that we're extending the pilot. And, and that's all I really had to say, but I, it, it was kind of sad to see it buried in the consent agenda because it was such a big deal to get it off and running. And now that it's successful and we have an opportunity to extend it, I just wanted to highlight that.
Any other discussion about this particular agenda item? Counsel Dale.
Just one quick for Jordan. So, absolutely what Counsel Hanson said. And I may have just missed it, or I'm drawing a blank, but notwithstanding, just for the larger audience, as we extend, when does it, when does the pilot tag come off and it just becomes a thing?
Yes, so during this extension period, I will be going before Planning Commission first for their recommendation if we should make this a permanent code change or not. And then after their recommendation, we'll be coming before you all with some ordinance language recommendations. So, we anticipate that's typically a three-to-six-month process. And so, the nine-month is enough timeframe to give us the wiggle room to get it done.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve the resolution extending this pilot program and allow it to remain in place while the Planning Commission reviews recommended code changes for permanent adoption.
Second.
Counsel Hanson.
Just again, this is, this is great. And we are doing things to help support the business community and we're changing and adapting. And I, I love to see its successes. Thank you.
Counsel Duquesne.
I agree, and I remember being a chamber liaison and how people really, really wanted it. It seems like no big deal. It's simple and it's effective, and I'm happy for that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale.
Yes.
Sherrell.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Jordan. And the next item that was pulled from the consent agenda is the Contract for Ashland Fiber Network DOC SIS 3.1 Upgrade Project. Counsel Hanson.
Yes, I mean, this again, was sad to see it buried in the consent agenda because again, we are upgrading our infrastructure and that affects a lot of Ashlanders. You know, our city workers, as well as our business community and our students, all the, all our folks that telecommute part-time like myself. And we have an opportunity to, to bring Chad up here to give us a, a quick update and tell us a little bit more about what this means and cost recovery and things like that. So, thank you so much for coming, Chad. And I'm hoping you can just give us an update that goes along with this item.
Yes, absolutely. So, it is our intention to have a signed contract for the DOCSIS 3.1 upgrade by December 22nd. And the project is estimated to take about six weeks. The bulk of that time, 14 weeks, will be spent waiting for the equipment to arrive. There's long lead times currently. But the bulk of the work for the upgrading of the nodes will be from roughly middle of April until the beginning of June. And so, by the beginning of June, over 60% of Ashland will have access to gigabit symmetrical. And the DOCSIS 3.1 upgrade will also allow us to provide multi-gigabit speed through coax. So, speeds up to 2.5 gigabits. And it is our intention to reach 4,500 customers by the end of June 2027. And right now, we're on track to do that. We just crested 4,400 customers, which is another all-time high for AFN. And while we're still doing this, you know, we're still focusing on businesses. We just signed up a hotel for direct fiber services on the south end of town. And almost the entirety of Mistletoe Road now has access to gigabit symmetrical as well.
All right, thank you very much. That's impressive. And this technology, by swapping out the component, will greatly increase the speeds without having to do a bunch of manual infrastructure upgrades, right?
Absolutely. It's going to be a fraction of the cost and a fraction of the time going with full fiber. And of course, full fiber is still
Right.
our gold standard.
We're still doing that.
That's still what we're working for. But this is an excellent stopgap measure until we can achieve full fiber.
Well, congrats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? The floor is open for a motion. Counsel Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award a goods and services contract to E+ for the DOCSIS 3.1 upgrade with a not-too-exceed amount of $1,179,589.
Mayor Second.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Counsel Dale.
Chad, it's always good to see you up here nerding out on this stuff. I really appreciate all of you and your team's work. And it is something that, and I know we'll get this kind of joke, but a lot of people, in all seriousness, don't, which is, which is fast or coax or fiber. And it's the same, it's the speed, right? There's a potential there to be able to go faster with fiber because of things, but it's really the equipment. So, because we're, we're, we're moving forward with coax, I mean, 2.5 or 3 or 5 gigs on coax is the exact same as 5 gigs on fiber. So, there, the investment here is actually something that is getting faster speeds to more businesses and more residents now to stay competitive with the, with, like you said, the underlying plan to be able to increase fiber reach so that we can get to more places when the equipment becomes cost-effective and available to do faster speeds. But this is, this is something that, just because it's on coax, doesn't mean that it's a, it's, it's not a very resilient and, and fast and solid plan. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Bloom.
Yeah, kill it as always, Chad. You keep delivering. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Counsel Duquesne.
I'd like to ditto what my colleague said, Chad, and I'm very, I'm happy to see that this is in budget. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We are cash flow positive.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Duquesne.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Sherrell.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. We are now to new business, the request to begin the surplus property process for 380 Clay Street. Sabrina.
I'm going to have Jordan come up here. So, a lot of surplus tonight with some of our city properties. So, we own a property on Clay Street. We are looking for council direction on how to move forward with this property. It has sat fenced for quite a long time. And part of our discussion during our budget was to move forward with options for divesting of some of our property. So, this is one of those items and a property that is tied to the general fund. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jordan.
Okay. Thank you. This is much simpler than the imperatus property. So, the question before you all as counsel tonight is really, there's three paths forward right now with this piece of property. One, we have a proposal from a local developer to purchase the property. So, if you would like staff to consider that proposal, we could put the property up for sale with our real estate agent, or we could hold on to the property and take no action for now. So, that's what I'm just hoping to base our discussion on tonight. Just to give you some details on the property, this is at 380 Clay Street. It's roughly 14,000 acres. There's a dilapidated home on it and an unfilled well. As lo, as, pardon me, the daquille is wearing off. As well as a very large tree on that property. We have held on to it for a long time. We just got an appraisal back late Wednesday. And I want to give you the update that the property was appraised at $250,000. As is. And so, that's the property itself. The developer that has submitted a proposal is Alan Sandler. He's a local developer that would like to purchase the property to develop housing. He has offered to pay all cash at a price close to the appraised price. Or he is open to taking it at a lower price point, along with restrictions on the property, to develop very specific items or specific price points for sale. I'm happy to go into details further if folks would like for this discussion. The floor is yours.
Questions? Counsel Dale.
I would like you to go into further details.
Great. About the property itself or about the developer's proposal?
The development proposal, please.
Yes, absolutely.
That's okay, Mayor.
Yes. Yeah, so I will, I have been working with Alan Sandler on the concept of childcare. He had a goal of building childcare in the valley. We went and toured and looked at 380 Clay Street as a potential property. You know, when he had his architect take a look at it, he really realized the greater potential for that property is really to have higher-density housing there. So, that is his interest, is to purchase that lot to build housing. He is a developer that uses cash for his developments, which then allows him to develop properties at typically lower prices compared to developers who have to take out loans and do other type of work for what they're working on. His goal is to build a workforce or lower housing. However, his preference is to have no restrictions on the property itself that would limit him or in the development that he makes there.
Questions? Any other questions? Counsel Dale.
Yeah, I've got another question. So, this one, Johan, for you, sorry. So, can you just summarize or talk us through the legalities of this? So, here we are talking, we just got through a previous agenda item about potentially surplusing property and going through the proper legal steps and so forth. Here is one that, there was an option that we could do this, or we can work directly with a developer that's approached us, is from a, from a legal, from a, from a surplusing standpoint, is the city within its, within its legal rights to just be able to, to sell it to a developer that came to us? Without going through a public bid process, I guess you would say?
We still have to open it up for public input. What you can do is if you want it to be affordable housing, you can put that restriction on it. But this is just to make you aware that there is someone interested, I guess, in the, in the process.
Yeah.
Or in the, in the property.
Yeah, and do you mind if I speak to that a little bit, Johan?
Yeah.
Because you, you, Carmel and I worked on this. So, we are able to work directly with the direct purchaser. But before we say yes to any agreement, we have to go through a public hearing process to say, this is what we anticipate selling the property at. This is why we believe selling at this price serves the public good. And then to seek feedback from the public before making that actual final decision. So, if we were to go out for bid, for example, having a real estate, our real estate person work on selling the property for us, the same process would need to be followed once we have a purchaser in place.
Counsel Sherrell.
Thank you, Jordan. Can you talk briefly about the actual physical constraints of the property? About the cottonwood tree, about the history of how the city got it, how much money we have into it? And, and give kind of a, like a overview, please?
Yes, and I will say, I wish Scott was in the room because I'll have more exact dates than I do. I believe this piece of property was left over from when we were working with the housing authority to develop the affordable housing in that section of town, Snowberry Brook. This particular parcel itself has a very large Fremont cottonwood tree on it. This tree is very large. It takes up a very large portion of the property. And when, under the city's ownership, we have twice gone forward for a permit to remove the tree to increase the development potential of the property. And twice, we have been denied that tree removal permit. So, the property itself, while it's flat, it's rectangular, it's in residential R2 zoning, that tree itself is a very large barrier for development on the property.
Thank you. And follow up if I could.
Yes.
Is there, is it true that there's potentially a well or a buried oil tank? Or there's, there's some other, maybe potentially liabilities on the property?
We are aware that there is a well. I believe it's a roughly 14-foot-deep well that's currently
Is there, is it true that there's potentially a well or a buried oil tank, or there's some other maybe potentially liabilities on the property?
We are aware that there is a well. I believe it's a roughly 14-foot-deep well that's currently covered with a piece of plywood, which is why we have a fencing around that piece of property to make sure people can't access or we can't be held liable for anything that happens there. So that well would need to be filled in. Whoever owns the property, whether it's us or someone else, you know, will have to look at the condition of the house. It is of the opinion of both the Deputy Director of Public Works, as well as myself, after looking at that house, is that it is, would be a strong candidate for demolition. It has, it is no longer safe in the condition it is in. In terms of other issues on the property, there are none that we are aware of. Of course, during any sale process or procedure, there would be increased number of inspections that would hopefully identify those things.
Thank you.
So Jordan, one of the questions I have about this is if we were to just simply sell it at the appraised value, we would open that up for bid? If there was no restriction, we would open that up for bid and see who gave us whatever amount of money for it? Is that correct?
We could either open it up for bid, or we could work directly with any proposer that we want to work directly with. But yes. And pardon me here.
So I know this parcel has come up a number of times in our earlier discussions, and we've talked about the potential of a couple of different things that are in line with the goals of the community. As you mentioned, childcare, which I think our initial understanding was that it wasn't big enough to provide for the level of childcare or the number of seats that you would need to have a viable operation on a lot that size. Is that the conclusion that's been come to in the conversation that you all have had?
I think it's, one, the sign, and two, the parking. That if you're going to have parking for a childcare drop-off along with a childcare center, the property is slightly small for that.
Yeah. Especially with the tree remaining.
Correct.
And so the other item that we were thinking about was really for affordable housing, particularly because that, we're expecting that it's a relatively small lot. It's got a lot of restrictions on it, so it wouldn't necessarily get us a whole lot of money. You said it's $250,000 is what?
The appraised value.
The appraised value is $250,000. So if we were to go, what would it look like if we were to go down a path where we said, yes, we want to surplus it? We are interested in affordable or workforce housing? And we put it out there and said, people, you know, nonprofit or for-profit builders, propose, send in your proposals that include some amount of a purchase price for the land. And we could let people come in and say, well, I'm maybe building, you know, very affordable housing, and so I am asking the city to sell that to me for a lesser amount of money. Or I'm, you know, I want to build housing that is for a higher, higher income group of people, and so I'm willing, you know, I would pay more for that particular piece of land. Is that something that we can do to just find out what would be the interest in the community among a variety of different developers for different kinds of housing?
You know, my recommendation, if that is the council's goal, to get affordable or workforce housing there, my recommendation would be to place a deed restriction on the property so that it is income-limited housing, and then put it up for sale. And then nonprofits or other developers can then bid on purchasing that property, you know, and they can bid at whatever price works for them. Currently, there is a chunk of money at OHCS right now that does expire end of June for purchasing property for land acquisition for affordable housing.
Where is that at?
I believe it's at OHCS.
Uh huh.
But I do know that there have been several nonprofit affordable housing developers that have approached the city, asking, you know, we would like to apply for this land acquisition money. Are there properties that are available for us to do so in Ashland?
And so if we deed restricted it, that would be an in perpetuity deed restriction, correct? We wouldn't be looking at the 30-year kind of thing, correct?
Yeah, I'll have to double check, but if it's a public interest deed restriction, I believe it's perpetuity.
It's in perpetuity.
And that would be what Jordan mentioned is most, I would think, the most recommended way forward. Put a deed restriction on it, put it up.
And put it up for bid and see who gets it. And, well, put it up for bid with the bid being, what is the purchase price that the proposer wants to pay, and what, in fact, are they building? And then the city would be able to look at that combination. Is that correct? Or do we at that point have to just sell it for the highest?
We would just put the deed and put it up for sale, and then highest bidder would win. Right? So we would recover the most.
We wouldn't then have any other consideration. We just, it's just a straight amount of money, which is simpler, of course. Counselor Kaplan.
So it's a question of, yes, it depends on what's the deed restriction? Is it deed restriction at, you know, 80% AMI? Is it 60%? How would you, what would you recommend?
Yeah. And just to be clear, that's for the next portion. So this portion is, do you want us to bring it forward, in this case, for a public hearing as a part of the surplus property process? And then at that point, the proposed use would be income restricted at 80% AMI, or, yeah, whatever it is, whatever it is, 100% income restricted, and that would be the direction, that would be the discussion for the public hearing? And then the next step would be the sale process.
So the suggested action includes initiating negotiations with the developer that's been identified in this packet?
That's just an example motion. It's in italics to know that you guys can replace that with any phrase you'd like.
So if we wanted to do something different in terms of a deed restriction, that's where we would direct staff in that space. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Jordan, I really appreciate you coming tonight. It sounds like you're under the weather, but way to make it happen. In your introduction, you described the lot size. Could you hit that number again to us?
Yeah. 14,000 square feet or .32 acres.
.32 acres. It's not a very big lot. Curious what the developer thinks they're going to be able to get there and what the zoning potential is for dwellings there. I mean, we're not going to do, you know, a five-story building on .32 acres. Is it like a couple ADUs? What's the potential there? I know Brandon's over your shoulder there, but what did you already suss out?
My ask would be for Brandon to raise his hand if I get this wrong. But we'll call up the expert directly.
Thank you.
So in part, you are asking me to do math Yes. on the fly. But at .32 acres, at 13.5 units per acre, it would have a base density of about four to five units. There are affordable housing bonuses that could be applied that go up to a 60% increase beyond that, in which case we're now talking about seven, six to seven unit potential. If you're doing smaller units, they count for less than a unit. So essentially, six small, or eight small units count as six full-size units.
Okay.
So I would say probably eight units would be a fair assessment of maximum density on the property. I know that we've looked at it previously. I just don't recall those calculations.
I think it was, I think we landed at eight. When we were looking at units that are sort of under 500 square feet. In fact, this is the property that I went and talked with a local architect about to just start to think about, what could we do with really small units, particularly now that we don't have parking requirements, which really limited previously how many units you could put on a piece of property. And so with the idea of going up to two stories and contain, either containing them all in a single structure, or, which is, kind of creates a miniature, you know, mini-community building, or, as the architect that I was working with laid out, a variety of small manufactured units, very small manufactured units, you know, less than 500 square feet, they could fit on the property without needing to request to tear, to cut the tree down. So there is a way to get 800 very modest-sized units, or, I mean, not 800, eight.
At 500 square feet.
Very modest units, or a smaller number with some of those that might be two-bedroom or, you know, a little bit bigger. But there is a way to get that kind of density onto that property, yes.
Thank you. So follow up on that. Maybe Linda's got an answer for this one, but maybe you two have got this. So what is our experience with private development on something like this versus affordable housing? I didn't say that correctly, but if a market developer was developing market rate, like, what is the potential for getting units out, like, you know, a year or two? Versus what have we seen for affordable housing development with just sort of a spitball timeline? Would we see housing in a similar time, or is it going to take 10 years versus two years for market rate?
I do think that market rate is more expedient. Typically, an affordable housing developer would be looking at getting construction funding through a grant process, and often state grants come about once per year. So there is a cycle of application. There's limited funding also at the state level, so if an applicant didn't receive it in year one, they may be essentially prepared to apply in the subsequent year. So we have seen affordable housing partners take a couple of years to get the funding together to begin construction on a project after securing the land, whereas market rate developers typically secure the land with the intention of developing it as fast as possible as to no longer maintain any construction loan or other costs.
Thank you both.
Counselor Sherrell.
Mayor, may I directly ask the Community Development Director questions about the property? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
This is mostly about the tree, and I don't want to like be a tire kicker here and like beat down the price or value of this lot. But can you speak to the people watching at home and to us up here, what a tree protection plan is and the limitations of the drip edge of the tree? What would need to be fenced? What would, like, where you couldn't even take machinery or housing?
Yeah. Typically, a development proposal would be coming forward showing development in the perimeter of a tree that has to be protected. An arborist would evaluate the minimum tree protection zone and delineate that on the plan. And so the approval through the Planning Commission would reflect what an arborist or technical experts said was necessary to protect the tree. I think in this case, a little history on it, it did have, I think it was in 2009, or even prior to that, probably back in 2005, an application for 117-unit subdivision on the property. This tree was required to be protected and ended up being part of that approval. That project never went forward. It's developed a snowberry that you're familiar with. Nonetheless, the tree was still to be protected. Subsequently, as Deputy City Manager noted, we did come forward with two different applications to remove the tree. In both cases, there were competing arborists, that one said that it should be preserved and could be, and another that said that it is dangerous and should be removed, which is another reason for the fencing around the property with that material in the record. So to answer your question, I don't think on this tree, it would be the entire drip line of the tree because it does spread out in a very horizontal manner. But we would be looking at the applicant's arborist to show what is the minimum necessary to protect the tree as part of an application, if not approved for removal.
Thank you, Brandon. And then a follow up on that, is there still a tree advisory committee that can override that arborist report and/or require only approval with a building permit and not before?
We have a management advisory committee that reviews applications and tree protection plans and provides recommendations to staff. Staff, in turn, shares those recommendations with the Planning Commission for approval. So we don't have a standing advisory tree commission, but we do have a management advisory tree committee that help, is stacked with arborists that can help us make those evaluations and volunteer their time to do so. So they don't have the commission authority to override. It's really the Planning Commission that makes the determination on the removal of trees as part of a larger subdivision. Staff does approve tree removal permits on small applications, but they are publicly noticed and subject to appeal to the commission.
And then just to follow up on that, if this was an over-the-counter, like, by right permit in an R2 zone, like, it wouldn't even need to go to Planning Commission, correct?
With the exception that this tree has already been identified as a part of a tree protection for a prior subdivision approval.
Oh, got it. So it's already, it's marked.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Jordan, you had said you had met with developer Mr. Sandler and talked through various things. And can you speak to what you feel, if you could relay what his intentions were relative to the tree, relative to his intentions for the property? And I know that we have affordable in its legal sense, and then affordable is market sense and what's realistic, and then also a timeline that the applicant, or potential applicant, was considering.
Yeah, absolutely. And I apologize, let me recenter on the beginning of that question.
Tree, we'll say affordability and timeline.
Thank you. Sure. It is the developer's intention to keep the tree. He thinks it's an absolutely beautiful tree and would love to incorporate it in any design that he can create for that space. You know, that being said, if the tree is ruled dangerous or a danger to life, he would, of course, move forward with removing the tree under the tree permit removal process. Sorry, all the day quill definitely stopped working about four minutes ago. When it comes to his timeline, you know, one of the reasons he approached the city is he wants to start work soon. He has his architect ready, he has a concept in mind, and he would hit the ground running with submitting a planning action request once the property is in his hands. And then the third point to the question that I missed is just his intentions for the property.
Well, the affordability and maybe the number of units that he was thinking about.
Yeah. So he was thinking five to eight units. A lot of the design depended on what he could or could not do with the tree. You know, his, he has two major investments in town, you know, some is commercial property and some is residential property. And so he is very focused in our conversations on how do we help support workers staying here in Ashland. You know, his desire is to keep things as uncomplicated as possible, which is why he requests no restrictions, because he knows restrictions can make things more complicated. But it is his intention to build housing, five to eight units of housing on that lot, incorporating the tree, if possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, the other question was about the use of the funds from the sale, from the proceeds of the sale going into the general fund. That's obviously just one option. There may be other options as well.
Correct. And what I mean by that is this property was originally purchased with general fund money. And so that money can be brought back into the general fund. It could be earmarked for something else, but it is not restricted like it would be if it was the wastewater treatment plant that owned this, or sorry, the wastewater treatment division that owned this property.
Sabrina?
So I think in light of our conversation yesterday and the element that we didn't get to with the facilities situation, councils should seriously consider the proceeds of this sale potentially going to a facilities fund, because we have no money in the general fund whatsoever to care for our facilities, and that is our biggest need. So if an HVAC goes down or anything like that, it's coming out of contingency at this point. And so that is something that I would highly recommend that we think about, starting a fund specific for facilities that can only be used for facilities maintenance, because that is something traditionally that we have not prioritized during the budget season.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, I like that. And I was thinking about the same thing, for example, the Hardesty, developing the Hardesty property, we need a place to put funds so that we will have the funds when we've actually said, let's go forward with it. Because we've said many years ago, let's go forward with that, and we don't have the funds for it. And I don't like the idea of purchasing property with general fund money either. That's one of the reasons why I think we've got some of these ups and downs and things. Some of those, some of those shortfalls are because we've used general fund money for special projects, like purchasing a property or fixing a community center or other things that we didn't have any other options to do with. So if we had a facilities fund, we could actually take that pressure off the general fund as well. That's hitting our general fund from time to time.
And it's my understanding that this property was originally purchased in that larger lot by Parks, correct? And then over time, it was, we partnered with Jackson, with a housing authority to turn it into housing. But so I also understand that we, in our financial policies, a certain amount of surplus property that is sold, some percentage is also supposed to go into our reserve fund. Don't we have that already in our reserve fund policies?
I'd have to double check on that.
So it would just, but it sounds like there isn't the sustained kind of restriction
money could go towards that makes sense.
So it's much more flexible than what we were looking at with the other question. Okay, any other questions of staff?
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I actually was just pulling up the reserve fund, but I guess my question to that point though would be for Sabrina. So is it possible to, to direct staff, however you do staff, but if we, if we choose to move forward with this, that we could not make a decision on where that fund, where those monies go tonight, just so that we can kind of have a little bit more of a discussion about that, knowing that we can bring that back and make that?
So I think it's yes or no surplus again.
Right, okay.
And I think, you know, we have Mr. Sandler who's interested and he's going to want an answer.
Yep.
And so if that is something that council is interested in, we can work with him to come to the process and the agreement. Or if council is looking to just surplus and sell the property for the highest bid or whatever, we can move that forward as well. So I think, again, it's yes or no surplus. And then if council has a desire tonight to give direction, we can move towards that.
Thank you.
Counselor Sherrill?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion if you'll allow.
We need to see if there are any other questions. Any final questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Counselor Sherrill?
I move to surplus 380 Clay Street and direct staff to initiate negotiations with the developer for the sale of the property.
Second that.
Counselor Sherrill?
Yeah, I think that this is a good opportunity. It's not a green light. It's going to obviously have to come back and be approved. I think that this property is hard and that's why development has always gone around it. I think that it's important that we put market rate housing in a block that's already predominantly affordable. It's just the same argument that we would have to put affordable dwellings mixed in with market rate dwellings. I think this tree is a, is going to be a huge problem for development and everybody that's come before this has seen that. And somebody with the chops in this community to get building done and get it done efficiently and quickly, I think is probably going to be at least a good option to explore. So I look forward to seeing how that process goes.
Alyssa, who did you get for the second?
Oh, I got Hanson.
Counselor Hanson.
I was going to say Rochambeau for second.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, but I would love to hear Counselor Kaplan's thoughts too. I appreciate the motion and I also had the privilege of speaking with Counselor Sherrill as we can do one-on-one about this issue. And he has had some great insights and one of the things I really came away with, it's been validated tonight through this conversation, was that, that I think, and now I'm going to my opinion, but based on that conversation, I think that this is the best move for the city because this developer could move quickly. And these are five to eight units that could be built maybe next year. And I would love the affordable housing play, however, two to three years doesn't just, right now, we're in a crisis. And I don't believe, based on the numbers, that, that these small units, the cost from what the developer is aiming at versus what, you know, affordable rates are going to be that different. And that's my uneducated assumption and estimation here, but I think this is the best, most expeditious thing for this particular property and I'm happy to support it and I'm glad it's here. I'm really grateful that we're starting to offload some of these properties and get this money back into the general fund or wherever it belongs.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I think others have said it before. I think this needs to be simple. It's a, this is a complicated piece of property. So try to add extra bells and whistles to get special, you know, special addition, added benefits, I think could just jeopardize the whole opportunity going forward and take it, make, take it much more, much longer or, you know, remove the possibility entirely. So I think this is the best way to go forward. I think it's going to be just the nature of the property. They're going to be small, small units that are relatively affordable, even if not deed restricted. So I'm happy to support this. I think the next step will be discuss where the, where the money should go, but we'll have some time to do that.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too, I echo what everybody else has said, but this is something that even though it may not feel like it to someone because we didn't explicitly put a deed restriction on it for affordability, sometimes we get in our own way with this. And I think that as much as the best of intentions to do something like that, in this particular case, we have a developer that is to, is willing to pay cash. To Counselor Sherrill's point, there's a tree. There is the cost associated with demolishing the house. There's a cost associated with what, anything else that could come up during inspections would just add to the cost of anybody trying to develop this through financing. And that's just going to add to the timeline and that's just the one thing that we don't have that is our most valuable resource is the actual time, as Counselor Hanson had brought up earlier. So is this something of a leap of faith? Absolutely. But I think it is absolutely one that we should engage in, given the history of Mr. Sandler in this town and what he's, what he's done and so forth and his intention. And I, I can't imagine that at this point, he would, would do anything other than what he said he was going to do. And that's just something that as a city, we, we take that at that value and also, you know, thing I was going to say that slips my mind because my dayquil is wearing off too. But, but I just think that this is something that, oh, it was going to be that this isn't like we're taking a leap of faith with a giant subdivision or an 800 acre parcel or something like that. This is .32, right? And, and, you know, commitment to five to eight, I think that we're, I think that this is a reasonable action to take and I think this is going to be an example to others of what can be done on places like this when we have public-private, not necessarily partnerships, but, but just agreements and conversations. So appreciate all your, all your work that you put into it, Jordan.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. I'm happy to see something happening on this lot. I'm surprised this tree hasn't killed over and killed somebody. And I understand it is a hazard. I want to say that I'm going to give a little pushback here because we are in a crisis, but we are more in a crisis for accessible housing for people with low income. And I understand that Snowberry one and two are there and there is workforce housing and affordable housing on Clay Street. And as we go a little bit farther down Clay Street, there's additional homes coming in that are market rate. So there is a mixture of market rate and low income homes in that community as I think it should be. And like I said, I'm glad to see something there. I wish that it were restricted and we could have access to affordable housing because that is what we need, jobs and affordable housing. So, and the city needs the money. So as it stands right now, I'm glad that it's out there for surplus. We can get some money for it. However, it won't be affordable.
Any other discussions? Roll call please, Alyssa. Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Gosh. Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yeah.
Dale?
Yes.
Sherrill?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Jordan. And thank you, Brandon. All right, we are to the last item under new business, the discussion of the use of Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
So counsel, if you remember, we typically do an annual RFP to pass through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money. We did pause that last year and so it's coming to the time of year in which we normally push that RFP forward. And so we're looking for council direction tonight on how you would like to proceed. And Linda and Brandon are here to help us out with that.
Great. Well, thank you. You'll see in your packets that Counselor Sherrill and I have put some thoughts together about this. And part of the reason why this council was asked to pull the RFP last year was because of a question around the strategy of that fund and the extent to which it was turning into new affordable housing units versus being used for, again, a good purpose in terms of emergency housing, but not really the purpose of the, of affordable housing development that would be long-term in the community. And so the thinking was that we could step back and think about what might be a more strategic way of investing that funding. You'll see in the structure, in the ordinance, there's a big, long list of different things that it can be used for, but a certain number of those, a number of those in fact, are not building new affordable housing units. And so, and part of that has been a structural issue, I think, in the community in terms of having nonprofit housing developers who would be available to do that. But the idea was that we would go through a process of developing a different strategy for how we would invest that. We have not yet done that at this point. And, and at the same time, the city has put in place the new ADU support structure with the ADU Design Library. There's a number of different things that we are watching to see how they turn out and what they turn into. And so it strikes us that because we're in this biennial budget, we do have this funding to put forward, that it would behoove us to put an RFP out. But what we're suggesting is that it would be limited to those items in the ordinance that are specifically about building new housing or developing additional capacity development for nonprofit housing developers. So that's really the conversation in front of the council this evening. In the past, the Housing Human Services Advisory Committee has gone through the grant proposals and developed recommendations that the council then takes up. That process would continue the same way. But what we are suggesting is that we would limit the proposals to certain items within that longer list. And Counselor Sherrill, anything you would like to add? We'll talk about the other issue after we've discussed this.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I think that you've done a ton of good work on this. We've had a couple of meetings discussing things like this and I probably lost a lot of sleep throwing different ideas around with you. So thank you for challenging me and like I've never seen anybody work harder than you. I, I'm going to, I'm prepared to support this going towards Affordable House, Housing Trust Funds and some of the work that's already been, being done here. So I'll, I'll look to support that.
I would like to ask staff if you have any concerns about this limitation.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and turn on your microphone there. Just press that front button.
Is that right? Can you hear me?
As long as it's red, yeah.
Hi, I'm Linda Reed. I'm the Housing Program Manager for the City of Ashland. Most of you know me already, but for those in the audience who may not. I guess my only concern is that actually within the resolution, it does set priorities and that the priority is, the highest priority is for new housing units. And, and then from there, it's in the ordinance, but it goes down from there. So it is new housing units, it is rehabilitation of existing housing units and making them affordable. So those are already our highest priorities. It is also in the resolution that the council can set the priorities that they want. I think that even though housing is always our greatest priority and has been since the inception of this fund, we don't always get applications for housing. And so we end up considering or funding other applications because we don't have housing applications. And I would point out that since this fund, since this funding has been offered, beginning in 2018, we have offered this fund four times and it has been a total of just over a million dollars. About 46% of that time, this funding has funded housing projects, new development of housing projects. About 11% of that time, it has funded capacity building because generally, capacity building is a lower dollar amount. We did about 38% of the time, we have funded shelter. And I would say that the largest portion of shelter that we funded was during the pandemic period where we actually had two applications, one for housing and one for capacity building and housing, which we did not fund because we opted to reserve that money for emergency use because it was the most flexible fund of money that we had to get FEMA reimbursement because we couldn't double dip with CDBG funds or other federal funds. So we made a conscious decision in 2020 to hold back that funding from housing and capacity building at that time.
And I would add, because the formation of the Housing Trust Fund did anticipate that there might be priority objectives that the council could direct, that should the city council direct that the funds be limited to award to respondents that are proposing new housing. It just should be noted that there is the potential that if we did not receive such an application, we would not be in a position to award and therefore carry the funds over to a subsequent biennium in order to award the funds. There is no harm in allowing the Housing Trust Funds to accumulate, to leverage larger projects. We have received information from some of our affordable housing partners that these Housing Trust Funds, even if they are a small amount, do function to demonstrate local support for their projects in their applications for state or other federal funding or other granters that might be providing funds. And as such, they see it as an essential component to leverage funds, even if it's insufficient to fund projects in their totality. So, you know, the only apprehension I would have is the potential of having projects that may be viable but don't create new housing, such as rehabilitation or rental assistance, not being funded in anticipation of waiting for an application from an affordable housing provider in subsequent years. But again, that's well within the discretion of the structure of the Housing Trust Fund.
Well, and just if I can respond to that, I think the other element of that is capacity building for local nonprofit housing developers. And I think that's, in thinking about this, we identified that we wanted to support nonprofit housing developers in our housing production strategy because we recognized that they were missing at the time and they were really necessary because we don't build housing at the city. And so, you know, my, my, our thinking is that it's, it's both of those things. So it could either be for actual construction or it could be for capacity building that, but that for this cycle, we would restrict it to those two elements is what the proposal is in front of the council. Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. Quick question for you, Brandon or Linda. Brandon, I heard you say that if you don't have an application by this time...
So we like to issue the request for proposals concurrent with, when we issue the request for proposals for community development block grants. So that an affordable housing provider can apply for both funds simultaneously, put together their project performa. There is the potential that a affordable housing developer is just not ready in January or February to apply for funds. And that has happened in years past, both for CDBG and for Housing Trust Funds, in which case they can be, those funds could be not awarded and carried over to a subsequent year.
And so if I may, Mayor, I have a question for you. You said that this can also help a nonprofit housing builder. Who, who do you have somebody in mind?
No, but we, we have identified that we need to be supporting community land trusts is in our, is in our particular housing production strategy. And so the reason it's there is that that was a missing element. If we don't have nonprofit housing developers, then, then we're missing the, the partner, the community partner that does the building in, in many of these circumstances.
So do you, were you looking at like a Habitat for Humanity, a nonprofit bill, what, who were you?
Yeah, and they are able to, they're able to apply anyway right now for capacity building. But what we would be saying is that of that list that's in the, in the ordinance, we are prioritizing this year, anybody who's actually building housing and capacity building for our community partners. With the idea that we then see how some of these other elements are playing out at the city, some of these other pieces we put in place. And before we get to the next issuing of the RFP, we could make any decisions about, are there particular ways of investing this money that, that really propel the building of new housing? Because we know that $100,000 a year does not make a big difference in most actual construction processes. So what is the very best way for us to leverage that money? We haven't had that conversation yet. There's, there's a lot of shift and change happening in the world in large part because of the, the uncertainty at the federal level. So it, in my mind, it makes sense to get that money out, get it, get it working. it, in my mind, it makes sense to get that money out, get it, get it working, focused on these two specific things, and then give us time to have that deeper conversation before the next budget process about what is the very best way to leverage this small amount of money for catalytic change. Counselor Hanson, and then Kaplan.
Well, this gets me really excited, because one of the things we talked about yesterday was our capacity to help and our, our planning to be able to help development, whether that be through a TIF or an EID, or some of these other mechanisms. So, so my, my question is to you, Mayor, and you, Councilor Sherrell, as well as staff, can we leverage these funds to piggyback on surplus properties? So like, when, when the B Street yard is, is open and available, the catalyst, as you, as you said, might be paying ourselves to get the land ready for an affordable housing developer. I don't know what that, really, what that catalyst is, but have you thought about this fund as a way for us to, to put resources into our surplus land that, that we want to really move the needle in affordable housing to get that ball rolling? Have you thought about that?
You want to start?
Go ahead, Mayor. I'll let you take the first stab at that.
I think for the next cycle of this funding, I think we need to take a complete look at it. And what does that mean? Does it, does it potentially mean an additional, some additional staffing that's directed just at developing affordable housing? Is it that we, we invest it in our own project in some fashion? Is it that we adjust a grant-making process? I think, I think all things are on the table in terms of how do we make this little tiny bit of money do the most it possibly can. But that's just my thinking. Counselor Sherrell?
Yeah, yeah, great question. I mean, I think personally, because the question was, was poised, I'm going to answer that I think we should be looking at doing some of our own development. I mean, we, we basically have a development company as a city. We have everything that we need to build housing, and yet we always out, not always outsource it out or hire consultants. This is not a negative. It's just like, we need to be thinking of doing things that we haven't thought of before, or in uncharted waters, to the point of, could we use that money to prepare infrastructure to build affordable housing? Yes. It's just, if we look at, I guess it depends on how much marijuana or cannabis people are smoking. At about $100,000 a year, I mean, that would barely put in the water sewer power for a duplex. So it doesn't go very far. Coming late to the party and understanding that the last round, we pulled this money back, so it would grow, and now, it sounds like some of our goals are to just deploy the money and put it to use somewhere affordable, as trying to balance the best we can, if we're surplusing property, to a market rate developer. We're also looking at taking some of this money and trying to earmark it to an affordable housing developer, whether that's trying to tee it up for trusted homes, somebody that's showing proof of concept today on the ground in one of our local developments, they could probably use this money. And then, Mayor, if I may, talk about some more alternative housing types? Is this a good time? Can I play into that? That's also within this package?
It is within this package. Let's
I'll pause.
Let's, let's, let's see if we can get through this piece of it first, and we'll take it up, because everyone knows it's coming. Counselor Duquesne?
I had a quick question.
Actually, Counselor Kaplan, sorry. And then Duquesne.
We look so much alike.
We do.
Yeah. So what was I going to say? I was gonna, oh.
It's Counselor Kaplan. I'm sorry, I had him in the, in the queue, but I have you behind him.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks.
Thanks, Gina. So I like the, I like the proposal, Counselor Sherrell and Mayor. I'm looking at the 10 items that are in the resolution, and it seems, and construction of new housing and capacity building is a fairly broad priority, a set of two priorities. So it seems to me the things that are not eligible, because the first, the first item is acquisition and construction of new affordable housing. The second one is conservation. That's, okay, that's, that's not, we would not use it for conservation. Land banking, so purchasing land is your intention, that if the, that if an organization needed money to purchase land for construction of new housing, it would not be eligible? Or would that be part of the construction? Let me just finish. That pre-development activities, again, it seems to me that that's part of construction, so that might be eligible as well. Bridge loans, I think, conceivably, you know, that would be part of the, part of a, a package to try to put together, to construct something. Capacity building, rehabilitation and emergency prepares would be out. Hazardous materials abatement, I guess, would be potentially in, but probably out, because we're not going to be in that. Direct benefits to lower modern income housing would not be, and transitional emergency housing. So there's really about four areas, it seems to me, that would be excluded directly. Is that, that's basically your intention? So thinking about construction and capacity building fairly broadly, to allow a lot of creative uses of these resources, but really not directing it towards shelter, or transitional housing, or conservation, reducing energy costs or something, or maybe even hazardous materials abatement. Is that your intention?
Yeah, it's, it's really directing this particular pot at the production of new housing and capacity building for community partners.
That could involve a whole bunch of these other things. I mean, you're not exclu, are you, do you intend to exclude in that sense, then, the possibility of purchasing land?
No, the, the four that you identified, land banking, pre-development costs, bridge loans, and, those, those three would all be included. Those are all, those are all develop, part of the process of developing new housing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would agree to that. And just to, to stick with the intent, I, I think the idea, at least that I had, was like, how do we apply, not that shelter or these other temporary uses aren't good, but how do we take this money as intended and apply it to an actual housing unit for somebody permanently? And if we look at the latest, I don't mean to keep using the same example, but it's, it's top of mind, and it's what just worked, and we have proof of concept. And at that, I think it was a 99-year lease and the affordable purchase of like $329,000, the target. I mean, this, this is like three quarters of a house for a person in this town. And the quicker we can deploy that, the better, was, was the intent I had in putting this together with the mayor.
Yeah. So, so we have the, in front, in front of the council, we have a couple of potentials, and we, we need to take a look at the other element that we have listed here. But the first is to be looking at directing staff to issue the RFP for, essentially for eligible nonprofits to request this housing, or this, this funding, or I guess it's just eligible organizations, they're not all nonprofits, eligible organizations to request the funding, and to be limiting it to these two basic general categories for this first year. And then, the second one would be to help us, to direct staff to help us investigate potential structures ahead of that next RFP process. So this, this larger question of how might we be more creative and more catalytic in the investment of that, would be something that we would be looking at for a second motion to direct staff to help us with that before we get to the next budget process. And then the third one is, and we, I just want to get to this piece, because we're at 9:16. Before we deal with any motions, I want to give the floor to Counselor Sherrell to talk about the other element of this. But if you have a question before we move on from this part, we're just, we're in a little bit of time crunch at this point. So, Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to get the body's vibe, or support, or non-support, on looking at different alternative housing types in relation to occupied recreational vehicles, or tiny houses, or RVs as dwellings. There's a bunch of really good statistics that we've seen statewide. Portland has a really good code that's four and a half years old. They've seen close to 1,000 units. These are anything from an RV to a tiny house. They're not inspected. What is inspected is the water sewer and power connection. We also have a state oversight, some legal state cover in the 2023 version of Senate Bill 10, I want to say it's 1013. We also recently saw Deschutes County, Clackamas County, and Lane County adopt RVs as legal housing. And we already have countless, I would say a couple hundred, estimated a couple hundred RVs or the like that are legal permitted dwellings in Ashland, either in a commercial zone, that's an RV park zone, or in an area that is legal non-conforming. So is there a risk in that? Yes, there, there's always a little bit of risk. But if we look out the window at some of the conditions people are living, there's risk in that as well. So I would just be maybe asking for some support, not just to look at different alternative housing types for next budget cycle, but potentially putting something together for review. I would like community development to maybe weigh in on that, and the Planning Commission, but I'm just looking for support for alternative housing types that would be more affordable legal dwellings. And I'll just end with this. If we look at data in Portland, the water sewer hookups can be done in 10 days with inspections for $20,000 tops, anywhere from $7,000 to $20,000. And then somebody could bring in an RV, a van, a self-made tiny home. I mean, we're talking about real housing on the ground, legally permitted to water sewer power for, you know, $20,000 to $40,000, which most cities and regulatory bodies, including our municipality, could strike one or two lines in code that we currently have to make this at least a, a potential option.
So we, we will take up that, that conversation here in a bit. We have two people who have requested to speak on this topic, so we'd like to call them forward at this point. Linda Adams and Krista Palmer, they'll each have three minutes at the podium. Yeah. And please, please be quick on the transitions. Thank you. Please tell us your name and the city in which you reside.
Linda Adams, I live down Oak Street. Ashland has shown courageous leadership by developing the state's first housing production strategy and providing for the use of marijuana, cannabis tax proceeds that fill the Housing Trust Fund. This comprehensive plan is a roadmap, and as we look at its array of tools, the Community Land Trust model stands out as uniquely capable of addressing the deep-seated challenge of permanent affordability. Council's recent unanimous decision to accept Trusted Homes CLT to develop six affordable homes in the Bear Creek subdivision is a crucial victory, not only for the six families who will finally achieve stable ownership, but also as proof of concept for the CLT model within our housing production strategy. Trusted Homes in partnership with a local developer, the city, the state, through the LIFT program, and generous contributions of citizens, isn't just building houses, we are, together, building community equity. This is not a silver bullet, but one that ensures we are building a foundation of affordability that is both deep and lasting. The proposal before you by Counselor Sherrell and Mayor Graham represents a strategic and impactful pivot for the City of Ashland's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, ensuring its limited resources are directly leveraged to achieve the core objective of the housing production strategy, increasing the supply of long-term affordable housing units. By consolidating the full $200,000 for the '25-'27 biennium into a single-focused RFP, the city transforms a series of small intermittent grants into an investment capable of materially assisting with construction costs, or critically building the capacity of local nonprofit developers like Trusted Homes to execute future projects more efficiently. Furthermore, by directing staff to issue this RFP now, the council creates valuable time to thoroughly investigate more impactful, long-term investment structures for the fund, as well as to explore innovative, low-cost housing solutions, setting the stage for a more robust and sustainable affordable housing program in future budget cycles. Thank you for the support of this work and your leadership. And for everyone here who hasn't donated on Giving Tuesday, donations to TrustedHomesCLT.org will be gratefully accepted and tax-deductible.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilors May Graham. My name is Krista Palmer. I live in Ashland, and I serve as the Executive Director of Sunstone Housing Collaborative. For the past two years, I've had the privilege of helping steward the Ashland Attainable Housing Project on behalf of the Ashland School District, while also building coalition around accessible housing and pursuing partnerships to integrate vital community benefits such as co-located childcare. I am here to support the motion to move forward with reissuing the request for proposals for the use of Affordable Housing Trust Funds. Developing affordable housing that is community-focused, sustainably designed, and financially feasible is a massive undertaking, made even more complex by the continuous administrative work required to keep project goals centered and navigate the inevitable challenges that emerge along the way. In 2024, Sunstone received $55,000 from the Ashland Housing Trust Fund, a generous award for a young, still emerging organization. These funds directly paid for architectural services for a draft master plan that clearly conveyed the project's goals, as well as technical assistance that enabled Sunstone to facilitate an RFP process for the school board to select a developer team best aligned with the project's needs. Core components of the project are affordability, universal design, and the inclusion of co-located childcare in partnership with the Oregon Child Development Coalition, elements we were able to champion from the outset through both the master plan and the RFP. Sunstone is not a developer and has no financial stake in the outcome of the projects we support. Our unique role, vision stewardship, partnership development, and administrative coordination has allowed an initial idea to grow into a tangible, achievable plan that serves both the school district and the broader community. The Ashland Housing Trust Fund award was more than just a one-time cash infusion for a specific expense. It was an investment. Directing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund toward continued investment in local capacity, collaboration, and service-rich housing models will sustain momentum for our community to not only build more affordable homes, but also weave in the supports like childcare, accessibility, and sustainability that make these homes truly stable and life-changing. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor Duquesne, I had you in the queue. Did you, did you have a question?
No.
I'm sorry about that. I lost the train.
No, I'm gonna just, no, I'm good.
You're good. Okay. So the floor, if there are any other questions for staff, the floor is, is open for a motion on the, of any of the three that are in front of you. But we do want to see what, how many we can get through the discussion tonight. Counselor Sherrell?
I move to direct staff to move forward with issuing the request for proposals for the use of Affordable Housing Trust Funds.
Is there a second? Counselor Hanson?
I was talking about.
Counselor Sherrell?
Yeah, I think we talked about it. I, I don't think this is like a perfect, bulletproof plan, but it's a good chunk of money that hopefully we're going to have some good applicants for, that will get deployed, and we'll be able to build on that.
Counselor Hanson?
And I appreciate this hits our community goals right at the top of the list, and baked into this is an open mind to figure out how to move the needle. And I think that us doing things differently is, is getting us somewhere. So I'm really excited about this, and I appreciate the efforts of both our, our counselor and our mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Kaplan?
Here, I didn't hear the prioritization of the two elements, of construction and capacity building. Did, I'd offer an amendment for that, if that's what you intended.
Yeah, that, I believe that was the intent, was that, was those two functions?
So let me...
He identified it in the proposal.
Did you say in the proposal? I didn't say.
I thought he said that.
No, 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 I didn't. Do you want to amend that?
So I would amend, yeah. I'd like to amend the proposal, I'd like to amend the motion to direct staff to target the use of the, the request for proposals to construction and capacity building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor, any discussion?
No, thanks.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Roll call, please, Alyssa, on the amendment. Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're back to the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. So we have a couple of directions. I, I'd like to hold off the second one that we, that we brought up here about alternative forms of, of housing, because we are going to have the committee, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee in front of us at the next meeting, talking about their work plan. And so if the council wants to have that discussion about including this as a recommendation, and something for them to work on and bring back to us, we can do, it's already on the agenda for the next study session, because we only have like one minute. agenda for the next study session, because we only have like one minute. And so if anyone is interested in putting a motion on the floor to direct staff to help us figure out that larger strategy ahead of the next budget committee process, now would be the time to put that motion on the floor. Counselor Bloom? Oh, counsel, is there any, any interest in that motion at this point? It's the second motion.
Yeah.
Councilor Kaplan?
I move to direct staff to assist the city council in investigating potential structures for focused investment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund beyond the current biennium.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Kaplan? Uh, we need, yeah, we need a motion to extend. Is there a motion to extend?
I move extend.
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion to extend, roll call, please, Alyssa. Sherrell?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yeah.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Okay. Now we are back to the motion. Councilor Kaplan, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I don't think I do.
Okay. Counselor Dale?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, is there any discussion about that motion? All right, roll call, please, Alyssa. Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Sherrell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, thank you. And we are to the end of our time, so unfortunately, we are not going to be able to receive our city manager report and look ahead, but we will pick that up at our next meeting. Thank you all, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.